I'm going to go on call us to order. Before we get started, I want to recognize Scott Bennett with the Fire Department. He just has a couple of announcements that he wants to share with the crowd.
Yeah, just reiterate in case you were not able to hear, just we want to try to keep the hallways and the walkways clear on that. So if you can find a seat, please do on that. So thank you. With that, I'm going to go on and open us up with a word of prayer and then we'll have a roll call on the agenda. Dear only Father, thank you for this evening. Thank you for everything that you've blessed us with. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and to serve citizens of Hendersonville and just be with us and with the decisions we make and give us guidance and give us wisdom. We ask all this in your name. Amen. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Here.
Coker?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Hardwick?
Here.
Hasty?
Here.
Longmire?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Silkwood?
Here.
Slattery?
Here.
That's all nine.
Thank you. We have a couple of public hearings scheduled for this evening. And the first one is a request by Henry and Ann Doris to rezone 4.47 acres from general commercial and industrial to multifamily residential planned development and to approve the comprehensive development plan for the property called Grace Place at Shackle Island. This request also includes amendment to the general framework map of Hendersonville land use and transportation plan to change the character area designation of property from employment center to suburban living. And with that, we have several speakers signed up on that. And the first one I have is Josh King. Josh, would you come up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Josh King. I live at 105 Labar Drive, and I'm here to speak in favor of this request. Grace Place does amazing things for the community and Sumner County at large and allowing them a facility where they can continue their operations and grow over time. As a resident of the city of Hendersonville, it's something that I am in favor of. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Anderson.
My name is Lisa Anderson. I'm the office manager at Grace Place, and I answer the phones and hear the women in our community and their plea to find somewhere to go. We have, I get about three, average of three calls a day from women in Sumner County that have absolutely nowhere to go. They are sleeping in their cars in the Walmart parking lot with their infants, with their children. They are jumping around from house to house, friends and family wherever they can find a bed for their children. The need is great. We have about 30 families right now on our waiting list, not counting all the ones who continue to call daily. In Sumner County, after calling multiple daycares and places in our county for a single mother with a child to not receive any government funding in our county and to be able to afford all of the basic expenses, she would have to make $31 an hour to be able to pay for everything without food stamps or any government assistance. And that is unbelievable, and we have a huge need in our county.
Next up, we have Kathy Odom. And I forgot to mention on this, please stick, give your address as well when you introduce yourself. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Kathy Odom. I live at 849 Pickwick Court in Gallatin, Tennessee. I am a member of the Board of Directors for Grace Place, and I strongly want to ask that you consider doing this because we desperately need housing for these women. I have been to the place where they stay and the conditions they agree with, which we're doing all we can, but we need a lot more space. So I respectfully ask that you all consider this.
Looks like next we have Erin Birch.
Thank you. My name is Erin Birch, and I'm at 1017-5 Coats Trace in Gallatin, Tennessee. And I am the lead, lead United Way of Sumner County here locally. I respectfully ask that you consider this request for space for Grace Place off of New Shackle. It's tremendously needed. As someone who works with the population that Grace Place serves in Sumner County, I can tell you that the expansion is very much needed. In the last year, our 211 helpline received over 288 calls in Hendersonville for shelter. Thank you.
Next up, Bruce Raely.
Thank you. I'm Bruce Raely. I live at 1,007 Notting Hill in Gallatin, also the senior associate pastor of First Baptist Church of Hendersonville. Several years ago, we actually began a study of looking to establish a place for moms, children that do not have a place to stay. We just saw the need. We have the largest counseling center in middle Tennessee through the Babs Center and through the Babs Center. We constantly heard of the need for these, these women. The same time Grace Place became established and instead of starting our own, we partnered with them. And we've been supporting them from the very beginning. We not only support them financially, we support them through many of our groups that provide for individual moms and their children. Grace Place is more than just a place for someone to stay. We, we provide hotel rooms for moms and children that are misplaced, but it's more than that. They help to get these ladies on their feet, get them established, get them to where they become functioning in society where they can make it on their own. And so as a leader at First Baptist Church, we have fully supported them. We will continue to do so, and we ask that you'll support as well this expansion to take care of this great need in our city and in our county. Thank you.
Somebody's got a handwriting as good as mine right here, so I'm going to get a little conference, see who's. Jamie Abbott? Yeah. I've got a soft spot in my heart for that because it looks a lot like my signature.
My membership teacher is going to have issue with that. Sorry about that. My name is Jamie Abbott. I'm a resident of Hendersonville on Pine Ridge Cove. I have had the great privilege of raising my two daughters here, and I know that this area gives, will have their best memories. And that is so very important to me. So I know you know the statistics, and I know that you know the facts. But what I would ask you to continue to consider is there is an opportunity for women and children to develop independence and also to love our area, our Sumner County, as much as your children and my children will. I'm in strong support of this, and I hope that you are too.
Next up, we have Jody Corley. Folks, if you're back there in the hallway, can you come in and find a seat up front? We've got a few vacant on that.
My name is Jody Corley, and I've been in Hendersonville, I always say since dirt, but I've been here since 1974. I've had businesses here, and I love this city, and I'm going to be buried here as well. So I want to see us do something that is wonderful and take care of our own. I think a lot of times that we hand it off to another city or something else like that. That's not the case here. Since 2015, Grace Place has existed. They have tried very hard to house women and children that are homeless and give them life skills so that they may go on and they may live independently. Our success rate in that, you will probably hear about that tonight, but it is wonderful. It's more than many nonprofits. And many of the nonprofits in this city support Grace Place as well. It would be an honor for me to say that Hendersonville takes care of their own and that they will support this and that we will get behind it, and I hope you'll vote for that tonight. Thank you.
Catherine Strong.
I'm Catherine Strong. I live at 630 Coles Ferry Road in Gallatin. Even though I'm not a resident of Hendersonville, I am the Circuit Court Clerk for all of Sumner County, and I want to tell you a little bit tonight about how Grace gives the court, Grace Place gives the court system a little bit of relief in the work that they do. As you've heard tonight, and I'm sure most of you know, homelessness is a much bigger problem in Sumner County than most people really realize. Homelessness also often leads other, to other decisions out of desperation that many times lands these women in the court system. It can send somebody back to an abuser. It can force them to live in their car, and they may not even be able to have insurance, afford insurance on that car, which ends you up in the court system. They might not even have a license because they've lost it for different reasons. There's a bazillion reasons half the people in this county don't have a license. But, and they might even, it can also cause a former addict to relapse due to the stress of homelessness. And once somebody ends up in the court system, hopefully none of you are aware of this, but the financial toll of the court system can be crippling between lawyer's fees, if you can even afford a lawyer, fees and fines and things like that. Like it's just, it, it becomes a hole that you're already in that just keeps getting deeper and deeper and deeper. And sometimes they land in jail, which means they lose the job that they did have that they were living out of their car to get to, which puts them even deeper in the hole. Grace Place for years has been diligently working with homeless women to help them pull themselves out of this hole. When these mothers that have, that have court costs are able to pay off their fines and fees with the help of Grace Place and systems that they have in place, then they're at less risk of losing their license, being able to maintain their transportation to and from work, and can hopefully stay out of our system forever, which hurts my bottom line, but I'm happy for that to happen if people don't owe our court system money and our county money. Grace Place needs to be able to help more families. That's just the bottom line. Please, as a public servant for the court system and a community member, please grant this request and allow Grace Place to expand their facilities and continue to help more and more women dig out of the hole that they're in. Thank you.
Brenda Payne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the Planning Commission. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. My name is Brenda Payne. I live at 1595 Hunt Club Boulevard, Gallatin, Tennessee. But as many of you know, that's actually Hendersonville. So I don't understand all of that, but I am a Hendersonville resident, and I want everybody on this board to understand that. I'm not here from Gallatin. I have been on the board now for about a year and a half, but I attended the first luncheon that occurred for Grace Place, as did some of the people who are sitting here in this room. And the idea that came out of that luncheon, that we would have an opportunity to pick up women and their children and find a safe place for them and to allow them to learn life skills and to teach them how to be responsible and how to budget and how to save their money and to recognize that once they've gone through this program, not only have they learned those things, and there's a lot of rigid rules that go on in that facility, but they also have to have a certain amount of money that they've saved in order to graduate from that program. There's opportunity for them to have transportation needs met, childcare needs met, those kinds of things. It hurts my heart to think that there are so many women in our community who have this need, but unfortunately there are. And so the opportunity for us to expand that mission and to pick up more and more of these folks, to make them solid citizens, to create opportunities for them to have employment, to become taxpaying citizens, and then they are actually contributing to the economy of our city, is something that I think all of us ought to be a part of and ought to be supportive of because we need those people to, to be a part of our city. I love the fact that we as a community have always come together and pulled together and helped people and made sure that they had what they needed. And so I would respectfully request that you give this your fullest consideration tonight as a safe place for us and a safe place for Hendersonville. Thank you for your time.
Melissa Rogers.
I am Melissa Rogers. I live in Gallatin as well, but I am a born and raised Sumner County, lived in Hendersonville most of my life, moved to Gallatin. I run warranty title here in Hendersonville, and I have the honor and the privilege to employ one of the soon-to-be Grace Place graduates who is remarkable and given an opportunity to be a part of her story and to help her be so successful and to succeed in the community as a thriving citizen and to see how far she has been able to come. I also have the honor and privilege to serve on the Grace Place Board, which is where I first learned of this opportunity to be able to employ this magnificent employee. And for me to tell you after, I know all of you have had probably issues with hiring employees that actually want to work and are thankful and grateful for a job and to be able to pay their bills and to raise their children, it's, there's just nothing more satisfying than that to her. And the thought of being able to bring more women and children and to give them that support to be able to grow and function in this community is just amazing to me. Of course, I'm in the business of selling homes or closing homes and people to put in them, so, and to build those communities. And I just, I cannot stress enough how much this employee has made a difference, not only in my personal life, but everybody in our office and just the potential that she has. Everybody should have that opportunity. And I want to be a part of a community, county, city, that can offer that. And I also request that you grant this and so that we can expand and we can serve more than just one or two or nine or 10, but as many as we can possibly get in, under this roof and be able to help support them. Thank you.
William Stiles.
When I walked in, I was a little bit late, and Dee said, you need to sign in over there. And I thought he was to sign in for the meeting. I didn't know I was speaking, so I tried to keep this brief. Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate the time. My name is William Stiles. I live at 529 Inham in Hendersonville, proud resident of Hendersonville for the last two years. And I also serve on the Board of Grace Place. When I moved here as a new resident, you kind of throw yourself in the community. I'm a small business owner, so you jump on every board you can. I tried to be very choosy about the boards that I wanted to be a part of. Grace Place has a very close part of my heart because we've talked a lot about the, the women and the, the mothers in Grace Place tonight. I want you to turn your focus to the children because these are single moms of children. And so I joined the board because as someone who has been in those situations myself, raised by a single mother, and I never was in the type of home or homeless, but we were in a battered home and a safe house for some time, I realized the need for people and the workers at Grace Place, because the workers at the safe house I was in, they touched me, touched my heart. And the reason that I serve in communities is because of people like Dee and people that are on the board and that work there and touch these children's lives every day. So think about that as you think about your decision tonight. Thank you.
Laura Willoughby.
My name is Lauren. I live at 104 Braxton Lane West, and I'm the program officer at the Memorial Foundation. I'm also a social worker. You may know that the foundation was established from the sale of the hospital 25 years ago and since then has been investing that endowment into the nonprofit community in Davidson, Sumner and Robertson County. And Grace Place is one of those nonprofit partners that we've been able to support since 2014. And I think it's well-established, all of the amazing work that they do in our community. But I know from reviewing their requests year after year, they receive over 100 applications every year demonstrating the immense need for their services. But their success rates really are amazing and show just how resilient and successful a woman can be when she's got the right support system like she does at Grace Place. For eight years in a row, after an extensive grant review process, both programmatically and financially, the Board of the Memorial Foundation has voted unanimously to award grants totaling over $300,000 to Grace Place to support the work that they do. So we're hopeful that you continue to approve this request and that we're able to continue supporting their work. Thank you.
Mike Martin.
I'm actually speaking about.
Okay, I will put you on the, thank you. Russell Erwin.
I am Russell Erwin. I live at 1139 Isaac Franklin Drive in Gallatin. I am the care team leader at Longhalla Church, and it was, it's my team, it's my team at the church that receives all of the calls, all of the requests. And it was out of all of those calls and all of those requests for help, especially with single moms, that Grace Place, I think initially, began. And we, we partner with Grace Place to this day. We, we treasure the work that's there. We've watched and heard the testimonies of moms. We've watched kids grow and change their lives. We just can't say enough positive about the ministry and the work of Grace Place. And so I urge you to support and encourage the things that are happening there with your vote. Thank you.
David Owen.
I'm David Owen. I'm the president of NASTIC, the National Association of Small Trucking Companies, and a resident of Hendersonville. My office is halfway in Hendersonville, halfway in Gallatin, so I'm one of those hybrids. I was lucky enough to marry into Hendersonville. Bonnie Owen, my wife, probably tall about half of you guys, or she's been here since the water, but I was lucky enough to move to Hendersonville, and I call it Ken in Barbie Land, and the mayor calls it the best place in the world to live, and I kind of agree with him. And Grace Place, I've supported now for 10 years, I guess, eight or 10, I don't know. And we totally love that particular mission. It's local. It, it shows some courage that's lacking in other communities, and that's to address mental illness, drugs, battered families, broken families, single moms. And it also is kind of tough love. So it's not a, it's not a handout. It's a, it's a leg up, so I don't see any grinches up there. So I don't see what's holding this meeting up. Let's go ahead and get it done.
Brian Stewart.
I'm Brian Stewart. I live at 1012 Rowe Barton Court in Hendersonville. I'm the owner of One Stop Realty here in Hendersonville. I'm also a commissioner, at least for a couple more months anyway. That being said, I met Dee, and I've known a few of the board members that are here. If anybody knows anything about me, I am always involved in the community. I was introduced to Dee, told what this organization was all about, and just basically jumped in headfirst, became the title sponsor for their luncheon. And Dee gracefully gave me five minutes to speak at that luncheon, and what she didn't tell me is whenever I got up there, there was 1,000 people plus staring back at me. So after my initial shock, which a lot of these people that are in this room were at that luncheon, after my initial shock, I realized how big this organization was, what it means to Sumner County, what I feel like it can do for Sumner County, not only now but for in the future, for, it's just a great organization and a face for Sumner County as far as giving back to the community. I, I can't say that I've been a supporter of them for 10, 15 years, because like I said, I just found out about it two years ago. But I did find out that there is a huge need to help these single women, to help these kids, give them a second chance. And for me, I think that's what it's all about, is a second chance. I think all of us have been there at a time in our life, and we could use a second chance. So I just ask for you guys to please vote in favor for this, help Sumner County out, help this organization out. Thank you all.
Mike Gahn.
My name is Mike Gahn. I'm from 120 Ashland Point in Hendersonville, Tennessee. I've lived here since Bonnie Ellen was my teacher. I'm just behind Lewis Oliver as far as residents here. Been in the real estate business for over 40 years, or close to 40 years, I should say. And one of the things that hadn't been said is, one of the things you're looking at is changing property zoning. I don't see where this is a detriment whatsoever to property zoning in this area from industrial or commercial to the use it's going to have. We as realtors, when we sell this community, we sell our schools, we sell our parks, and we sell our community service. So I can't imagine anything better than to be able to tell what we do through Grace Place for community service. So I would please ask you to support this. Thank you.
That's the list that I have to sign up. Is there anybody else that intended to speak on Grace Place that? Yeah, yeah, okay. Can you, you got the mic, can you state your name and give us your address, please? Thank you.
My name is Keisha Ray, and I'm from Gallatin, Tennessee. I live at 1517 Winden Way Circle. I'm actually the crisis social worker for the attendance department with Sumner County Schools. I've worked with Dee since the inception of Grace Place. What I want to say is, I wouldn't want to deal with her because she's tough. She's going to come after you if you're not doing what you're supposed to do. So these women and children being in her facility, they're going to do what they have to do in order to make it out and to be a productive citizen. Right now, we have 414 students that are classified as McKinney Vento, and that, that's another definition for homeless. And Grace Oliver and I actually started the program with Sumner County Schools. So we've seen every and any and everything that could happen. We've seen people sleeping in the parking lot of Walmart. We've seen them sleeping in the parking lot of Chick-fil-A. Those are the safe zones. But when you have a place like Grace's Place, we don't have to worry about those safe zones. So I'm asking you- So I'm asking you, please support. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other speakers that didn't? Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Good evening. Thank you, Planning Commission, for hearing us tonight. My name is Jamie Hayes. I live at 120 Governor's Point Boulevard in Hendersonville, Tennessee. My husband and I moved here in 1982, and it's the place that we have deep roots and three grandchildren, and we love Hendersonville. There have been, oh, I serve on the Sumner County School Board, and I just want to, I totally agree, Keisha. This ministry is a great need in our community, a great need. We're doing the best we can with the space we have, but we don't have enough space to meet the hundreds of requests. Words out about Grace Place Ministry and the great work that is done and the success rate of our graduates. I serve, well, Jonathan and I have been givers to Grace Place since it started. I serve on the steering committee of the Grace Place Alliance. There are 103 women in this community who have made a commitment to give annually a large sum of money that goes to this ministry. We also serve when there are needs. Dee puts the word out. We help these graduates get settled in their apartments. They have passed all the tests, they are ready to move on. This 103 women, there is a signup list, and we are buying lamps, bedding, dishes, nursery items. This ministry has a support arm that is magnificent. How many in this room, if you'll stand? I know not everybody signed up to speak. If you are in support, or you're here because of Grace Place Ministry, Steering Committee, that's something that you give to, hey, Bonnie, would you stand? Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate your due diligence and the decisions that you need to make on the Planning Commission. We are asking, we are praying, and we're believing God for this next step for Grace Place Ministry. Thank you for your time.
Any other speakers on Grace Place? Hearing none, seeing none, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. We have another public hearing scheduled tonight on that. This is for, okay, I was just going to say, do you have anything characterized on? Okay. Now, this is just zoning ordinance change. My first speaker that I have up is Joshua King.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Joshua King. I live at 105 LeBarre Drive here in Hendersonville. Once upon a time, when I started in my profession, someone told me that being a professional planner or being on the Planning Commission, you often require the wisdom of Solomon, yet sometimes it feels like your job. So with that being said, I support the staff as a resident of the city of Hendersonville. I support the staff on the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance. I think a lot of the changes, specifically with the NC zoning, would help level the playing field for some of our older buildings in town for, to allow them to be successfully reused into more amenities that would make everyone in this city a little bit happier. I'm also representing a client who has a vested interest in a purchasing a potential building that would be benefited by some of the changes to the zoning ordinance, and on behalf of him and his team, we are supportive of the zoning ordinance changes specifically to the NC zone, but also as it relates to the brewery uses. So I am in support of the staff and the zoning ordinance proposed changes.
Next up is Sam Stockard.
Yeah, Sam Stockard, live at 223 Shivel Drive, moved back there about a year and a half ago after being gone for roughly 30 years. Was born, raised there, not born in the house, born in Gallatin, but raised there, you know, moved out, came back. I think Thomas Wolfe said, "You can't go home again." He might have been right. I was here to speak about the property at 217 Shivel, but that could be worked out, but I'm still concerned about the, the blanket zoning that's going on across Old Town part of Hendersonville, especially the residential. The, the regulations as they are now are extremely loose, 15 units per acre, 45-foot-high buildings or foot-tall buildings. That's out of control. So I appreciate your effort to try to rein that back. Seven is more amenable, but in, in a neighborhood like ours, you know, we've already got the, the deal on Stadium Drive, unacceptable. We got the townhomes on Plumley Court. We're living with it best we can. You know, when I grew up there, we roamed the neighborhood, rode the Oliver's Yards, pilfered cucumbers from the Whittaker's vegetable garden. I hope the statute limitations has run out by now. But I'm afraid if we continue to allow this multifamily housing just to take over the older part of town, there's not going to be, there's no hope for these children coming up. They're not going to be able to roam the neighborhood, ride their bikes, play ball in people's backyards like we used to. I mean, that may sound hokey, but I wouldn't trade that for anything in the world. And it's a big part of me growing up, and, you know, people like the Olivers, and that, that meant a lot, a whole lot. It shaped my life, and it can shape other kids' lives too. But if we just zap the area, and every time someone moves out, we, we build seven townhomes on an acre, wh- what kind of life is that for children? So I'm requesting that, that we put a, that you all put a hold on this multifamily zoning for as long as you can, and try to come up with something that's more amenable and not just a blanket-type zone that doesn't give the residents any hope. Then come up with something that maybe can return Hendersonville to yesteryear. What's wrong with 1976? It was a great place, and I think we need to go back there. And then let's come up with some regulations, some sort of historic zoning area that could, I know Murfreesboro, I lived in Murfreesboro for 30, Murfreesboro area for 30 years or so. As a journalist, I covered a lot of those meetings. This is the first time I've ever spoken at one. Luckily for you all, I'm not writing about it. And I think that you all could do the same thing as Murfreesboro and have some sort of historic zoning commission that can oversee this, these types of developments that are proposed for the oldest part of town. That's the best way to go about it, and I would be glad to, I don't know if I could serve on it because of my job, because I'm still in, still a journalist, and I just don't know if that would mesh with what I do for a living. But that's something for you to really consider, and I hope you will, and I'll let everybody else take, take it from here. Thanks.
Just a matter of personal privilege, could we go back to 1978, just so I can participate?
Seventy-eight's fine with me. I was at Hawkins then.
Belinda, I'm going to have a little trouble with your last name here, but 225, thank you.
I hope I'm speaking in the right term as far as which topic we're on, but I'm going to echo Sam Stockard's sentiments, who was just up here. He's my neighbor. By the way, I live at 225 Shivel Drive. I'm Belinda Bledsoe. I moved to Hendersonville about 20 years ago. For the first several years of my residence here, I lived kind of off Walton Ferry and in just typical Hendersonville Walton Ferry home, but I used to drive up and down Shivel Drive all the time and drive through the old part of town, Noakes, Campus, Plumley, all the little streets that make up Old Town. And I used to daydream about, I would love to have one of those cottages one day, and I think so many people in this town feel that way about that neighborhood. And about 10 years ago, I finally had the opportunity to buy a house over there, and I've been in love with it ever since. I mean, it's the most wonderful home, from the old hardwood floors to the built-in bookshelves around the fireplace, to the chimney, to the old trees, and I know that all my neighbors feel the same way about their homes and live in that neighborhood because we love the oldness of it. And the people who remember this town back in 78 and earlier, and like Pat, who's lived in her house all of her life, and she's 85, I mean, for the people who remember the early days of our town, I mean, they love that neighborhood. And I feel like, with all respect, that sometimes it's easy for those of us and those of you who serve us, who have lived here for so long, to maybe sometimes take for granted or forget what the most valuable assets are in this city. Obviously, the lake is our jewel, but our history is the other thing that makes us unique. I mean, yes, we all want clean streets and safety and low crime rates and good schools, and thank goodness we have all that, but a lot of other towns have that too. What sets us apart is what makes us different, and our history is one of the only things that does that. And we, you know, we've got Mont Haven and Rock Castle and the country music history, House of Cash. We've got even the quirky old intersection where Old Shackle hits Gallatin Road, you know, but, and, and these beautiful mansions on Gallatin Road out toward the plantation and so forth. But the heart of town is the Old Town, and I feel like it's very easy to just let things get slapped up in the name of easy development, passing things, and forget that it just can go like that if you don't preserve that integrity of these kind of old buildings. And so I would just ask that as you consider these zoning overlays, as it pertains to the old part of town, that you remember that some of these homes are almost 100 years old, and you all have been entrusted with the responsibility of making choices that will still make people fall in love with those homes in 100 years. I would ask that you not make hasty choices, but that you remember to preserve a legacy that'll make this town still be somewhere that people want to live.
Mike Martin?
Good evening. My name is Mike Martin. I live at 224 Shivel Drive with my wife, Lee. Unlike most of the folks here, I don't have a lot of history to talk about and stuff, but what I can offer is the, the newness, the, the first impression, and my first impression of coming to Hendersonville was on Main Street, coming from Madison under the bridge, and Hendersonville opens up, and it's just this unique town with green space. It, it's, it's, you don't find it very often. So to me, Hendersonville is very special. With the zoning discussion, my, my focus is obviously going to be the Old Town Residential. I, I can't wrap my head around it, and I don't have that history. I'm, I'm wondering if maybe it was created before Indian Lake, but now that Indian Lake can support that kind of high-density housing, maybe we didn't get back to kind of release the Old Town Residential. You know, the 15, you know, units per acre, 15-plus, that is an astonishing high amount of high density for a residential neighborhood. And, you know, when, when I drive up and down the streets, there's single-family homes that have been there for a long time. And so when we got this planned development at, at 217 Shivel, it, I, again, couldn't wrap my head around it because it is a suburban neighborhood with old streets and, I mean, I think we just got fire extinguishers. That's how the, the utilities and, and infrastructure is. So, you know, I'm still working my way around the Old Town Residential. My impression is that it doesn't fit the area. I would like to ask, you know, you guys to take a second look at it. We're in a, a big time for property values and purchasing. There's not enough property to go around, and we're feeling those effects with having, you know, a sing, a single-family home purchased and then having a, I guess, an apartment complex with 15 units that aren't even 500 square feet each. I mean, it, it's, it's difficult to wrap my head around. So I, I think there's, there's something to do, to take a look at. I don't know if there's a way that we can stop, maybe do, maybe do a hold on high-density applications while we figure out what we want to do. But ultimately, I, I'd like to ask that we look at, you know, a, a solution. I like Sam's idea of having a, maybe a board or a historic, kind of a group that reviews stuff. I think Franklin has one, and I think their downtown historic district has really benefited. Their prices haven't gone, their property values haven't gone down. In fact, their property values are, are skyrocketing because of it. And I think Murfreesboro, and I think something similar for the historic part of Hendersonville. I love living there, and I love the house that I live in. And to me, it's very unique to hear stories about how Plumley helped build the house, and Plumley was one of the people that helped find Hendersonville, and he's got a street named after him. I mean, that's something special, and I think that area of town should get kind of a, kind of a special look. So I appreciate it.
Lee Martin?
Good evening. My name is Lee Martin, and I live at 224 Shivel Drive. I'm here to talk about, I live in one of the old houses in Hendersonville. My house was once owned by L.W. Oliver and Francis Stamps, that's my grandparents. And prior to that, I resided at 222 Shivel Drive, which is right next door, and that was the home of my great-grandmother and my great-grandfather, L.W. and Mary Ellen Oliver. And both houses are over 70 years old, and they are sturdy today as the day they were built by my grandparents and great-grandparents. I'm here tonight to speak about one of the best things in my life, and that's my neighborhood. It has, it is where we have cho, chosen to raise our family. My concerns are certainly not about the money the houses may or may not bring from developable, from developers, but rather it's about preserving not only my family's history, and most importantly, it's about preserving Hendersonville's history. We have so little left to preserve in our community, and we must work hard to protect the parts of our hair. the parts of our heritage that are important. Quite honestly, I consider it to be an honor to live in an area so rich with history. My father and his siblings grew up in a house, and my great-grandparents live next door in the next house. Now I'm fortunate to raise my own children in the same house and in the same neighborhood. Some of you may know that my great-grandfather, L.W. Oliver Sr., received the most votes in the first election for the city of Hendersonville Commissioner, and was offered to be the first mayor. Even though he received the most votes, he decided to turn it down because he was a carpenter, not a politician. And Dink Newman, who lived on Powell Drive just a few blocks away, was eager to accept the responsibility of mayor. As a matter of fact, my great-grandfather and Mr. Plumley built the house on two-two-two Chival. And as, my husband and I, we live there now. And as we continue to renovate and update our house, I always keep in my mind the personal historical significance of the homes and of that neighborhood. We have twin boys who are growing up in that home. They're four and a half years old. And when my boys are playing outside, we want to know that they are safe to be out there. We want them to know that our neighbors, who are their friends, are watching out for them. And if we go on a walk, we are in a, on a beautiful tree-lined street where we know most everyone around us. As they grow up, I want them to feel the same sense of community that we feel now. In the unsteady times that we're living in, it's still important to know that you have family in a safe and trusting neighborhood. We are blessed to live here, to preserve this portion of our city's history. I'm here speaking on behalf of the multiple generations that grew up on my very street and has made it what it is today. We have obligations to protect and save our history on their behalf. It is only through preservation of our history that future generations can learn about the past and understand the importance of the past and how it shapes our future. To me, it's about heritage. It's about the safe neighborhood and community. I would hate to see the whole neighborhood destroyed. I believe that in preserving our town's history is a worth, worthwhile investment. The continued high-density zoning in the neighborhood of Chival Drive will not enhance our street, will not make Hendersonville safer, and does nothing to preserve our town's history. Why should we, as a city, allow for something that will not lift up and fit within our history city to be built? Thank you.
Last speaker we have signed up is Shannon Bergdorf.
Hi there. I'm Shannon Bergdorf. I live at one-thirty-eight Riviera Drive. I'm here first as a resident to discuss my opposition to the proposed development of two-seventeen Chival Drive. My husband and I have lived in the Lakefront Estates neighborhood since nineteen ninety-seven. You may not recognize this name, but it was the first and is the oldest lake neighborhood in Hendersonville. Cumberland Shores Drive, where we first moved and brought all our sons home from the hospital, too, and now Riviera Drive, residing in the Wagner House, built in nineteen fifty-eight by Ben and Lynn Wagner. She was a librarian at Hendersonville Elementary School, now Jean Brown. This is our home, and my husband declares we shall die here. Raising my boys, we would bike run, walk, and drive all over Chival, Anchor, Noakes, Gale, Harbor, Plumley, and Stadium. We would wind from our brick ranches on our one-acre-plus lots to the tiny neighborhood of old Hendersonville. It was like moving from one movie set to another. The aesthetic and feel was completely changed from one street to the next. We liked it. We still do. The neighborhood had suffered much blight over the years, and when, in the early two thousands, the city approved the town center plan, I was ecstatic. Finally, the original old and beautiful Hendersonville would get its due. We would have a new library and town hall to start with a much-needed beautification project. It was near the elementary school, Park Place, and Christian Towers. Alas, the library was moved to the streets of Indian Lake and the town hall to East Main. The project had failed. As the years rolled by, something began to change, though, naturally and of necessity. New families began moving into the older homes and rehabbing them. What a wonderful thing. The ninety-five Plumley townhomes were built, and it seemed like everything was going along well. But then the bait man on the corner of Imperial and Stadium passed away, as well as the twins who owned the home across the street adjacent to Jean Brown. The rumor mill began as usual, and then all of a sudden, it was no longer a rumor. It was true. They're rising from the ground where seven homes were once there had been two, and another thirty-eight were once there had been one. I come to you now as the new Sumner County Commissioner-elect of District Nineteen. These people who have spoken are all my constituents and my neighbors. I ran and won on a platform of no more high-density residential. From Saunders Ferry Road and Dana Drive over to Harbertown is my district, our district. I knocked over two hundred doors and spoke with well over one hundred people. With the exception of two or three, this was the chatter. What is that going up over there on Imperial and Stadium? How did this happen? We already have too much traffic. Who thought that was a good idea? I've lived here for thirty and forty years. What are they doing to us? They can't even fix our roads, and now they're adding more homes. I explained that as Commissioner, there was little I could do to stop what is going on, as every street in our district is a city street. This was a town center zoning issue, et cetera. But one resident asked me when I explained this, well, what will keep them from doing this here on my street? She lives on Dana Drive, which is almost a Saunders Ferry. My reply was, I can't answer that. And I can't. But this I know. If we continue to add numerous new homes to our district, we will need numerous new county and city services. Chief among them will be teachers and seats in schools. These are not free. They cost money. We will need new policemen, firemen, and paramedics. These too cost money. And where does that money come from? You, the taxpayer. You will pay for all the new development. You will pay in cash, time through added traffic and wait times, and reduced security. The streets alone are justification against this particular development. I don't know how on earth a fire truck or ambulance can get to a suffering entity or a person at two-seventeen Chival in record time. The street as is is barely two compact cars wide. There are no sidewalks or shoulders. While this development is lovely, and I do love modern architecture, it doesn't fit in this neighborhood. It will stick out like a sore thumb wedged between two sweet nineteen fifties-era homes. The reasons for not wanting any more of this type of development are too many to enumerate tonight. But at the end of the day, it doesn't matter that the Bergdorfs don't want this development. It matters that the neighbors and voters in this district, all over the district, don't want any more high-density residential. They want to maintain the lifestyle they've come to love with Hendersonville as it is, not as a planner may wish it to become. This is the duty of government to protect and defend the current residents, protect old Hendersonville and defend it and her residents from any further harm. Thank you for your time.
That was the last speaker signed up for this public hearing. Is there anybody that did not get an opportunity to sign up that wanted to speak on the zoning ordinance amendments? Okay, thank you.
Forgive me, I'm not prepared at all. But I would like to say that we've owned the property at three-
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Sure. Three oh-two Walton Ferry. My husband and I, Nestor Eaton, Jerry Lou Eaton. We've lived next door to Patsy, who's been there for eighty-five years. To me, there are so many things that you don't have a choice on. T-Dot has come and taken the road. We're good with that. We know that's gonna happen. But you all have the choice to make here to save the historic area, Chival, Stadium, Plumley. And to me, I bet you, at least once a week, we are sent pictures of our property asking to buy it. It is a choice my husband and I have made. We live down the street, but this is our property for thirty years. We've made the choice not to sell, not to make, I don't know, half a million? Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand? The money is not important to us. Do we need it? Of course. We all need money. But it's your decision, and I hope you make the right one. Thank you.
Do you mind, ma'am, I didn't get a chance to write down your address quickly enough. Can you give me that again, please?
Do what?
I didn't get a chance to write down your address quickly enough. Can you give me that again, please?
Three zero-two Walton Ferry Road.
Okay, thank you.
Next to three hundred.
Okay, thank you. And I think we had one more speaker. Yes. Yes.
Hello. My name is Grayson. I live at two-fourteen Noakes Drive. And basically, everybody that's come up that is against this, I agree, too. I am totally against this rezoning because it seems like not only the traffic, but I'm also thinking about the crime. I'm also thinking about nature. I'm also thinking about not only children playing up in their backyard, but I'm also just thinking about other contractors and other business owners want to come down here and feed off Hendersonville charm. And I just disagree with that. I don't think that these people that live in other states, it's not right that they're just feeding off of us, making profits, making money. I totally disagree with it. And I just keep thinking about not just living on that street and hearing the vehicles that don't go the speed limit and thinking about people that are out walking, but I'm also thinking about how are people living in these neighborhoods? Because it's, it's already too crowded over there. So I just want to hope that y'all disagree with this. Thank you.
Final call for any speakers that were signed up to, that didn't get the opportunity to sign up on the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
My name's Randall Arthur, and actually, I live out of the city now. I've been here since nineteen seventy-three. My father used to be the Assistant City Manager when Lewis Oliver was here. The one thing about Hendersonville, we moved from the Panhandle, Florida, by the Four Walton Beach area, is it's a very wholesome town. Growing up here, it's been really nice. We lived at Donman. The nice thing about the old part of Henderson, Hendersonville is that the houses all have unique architecture. They've been built over the years. You can actually go walking down the street, if you don't get bit by a dog sometimes, which is a big problem in all of Hendersonville, Gallatin area. But you know your neighbors. People have the tendency to wave or talk to you. When you get a high-density apartment complexes, or I'm not sure what the stadium is, it's rentals or whatever it is, the influx of people that don't really care or make it their long-term community tend to come and go. They don't tend to watch out for kids. They tear down the streets. You get a lot of younger kids that just come in from other parts of the area, Nashville and whatnot, that really don't respect what this town is. And, and a lot of the residents that like a easy, quiet, safe neighborhood, you know. And that is the nicest thing about old Hendersonville. It should really be thought of as a historic area that you can come in and eventually get sidewalks in, at least on one side, not to mention Walton and Saunders Ferry Road, because it's extremely dangerous. But it would be nice because it is a very walking and bike-riding-friendly area, because there are small streets, and it's off the main road, and the residents like to use it. And I really don't think that that type of architecture that's being put in for zero lot lines, and I've helped Bill Tow build a few of those at one time with Superintendent with him, but at least he tried to hold the architecture and the neighborhood to something that resembled what was there, or could at least cohabitate with it. But what's being thrown in now is like the tall and skinnies that you get in Nashville. And Nashville's getting tons of problems with the crime rates and the speeding and a lot of accidents. And you really want it to stay representative of what this town's always been. And it's a jewel by the lake, and that's what it is. And that's what it has been. So I really would like for you to consider a commission to be able to recognize the citizens in that area, because it is a small, unique area compared to all the other bigger houses and down on the peninsulas on both ends, which were built mu, you know, much later. But that area is ripe for development, for an artist-style community like you would see over by the Hillsborough area, that's very sought after, or over by the edge of, what is the trifecta, I think, Tri-Veca or whatever, right on the edge of Nashville on the bypass that runs through. They're all older homes that keep getting restored, which brings the value of the area up on your tax appraisals. And you still have a nice historic-looking area that you remember from what started this town. And let the sprawl go on out, which it has. And they've built the newer, bigger houses, but keep the quaint, small community that started this entire community here and drew so many wonderful people to the Hendersonville area. And Sumner County's always been very nice, and it's been my home, like I say, since seventy-three. And I've came back and moved out many times, but I couldn't not stand up and at least let you know that that area down through there is really worth saving, you know. And especially with all the remodeling and rehab and that's been going on and that, to have monstrosities stuck in the middle, it really brings down the entire quaintness of the neighborhood. Because if you would develop it into a nice, old-town, historic part of Hendersonville, I think you'll see the benefits for the town and for the community all around it, and including the tax base, which everybody here pays. But they also like to see something nice for it, instead of going, oh my God, what is that? Or I don't have room. Somebody's parking on the street, and only one car can get through, because their doorstep's right on the street, if you've not looked to see how it looks down there, on the stadium. And if you put that kind of a complex on Chival, you know, really, I suggest you drive by and look at the neighborhood, because a lot of people don't go in there unless they live there. But it's a wonderful place. Lee and Michael, their kids play outright on the side of the street. They don't ever get in the street, thank goodness. But we have cars that tear down through there. I've got a friend that lives right there across the street from them. I don't mean to run it on forever, but it's a fairly safe neighborhood. But as the townhomes came in, there was a lot of high-speeding traffic that started running through a very small street. And with this new development going up on Stadium, and I'm not gonna say I know it's gonna get worse, but think about the people that, you know, have elected you and don't mind paying taxes for a wonderful town. Be nice to keep it that way. Thank you. Did you want my address? Fifteen ninety-one Brinkley Branch Road, Hendersonville.
Last call for speakers on the zoning ordinance amendments. Seeing none, I'm gonna declare that public hearing closed. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, and this will be for commissioners, any requests for information or assistance. Seeing none. Any additions to tonight's agenda? Seeing none there. We'll go now to the approval of minutes from our last meeting. I would assume everybody's got an opportunity to kind of review those, and so I will entertain a motion to approve.
To accept.
Heard Vanessa first, but we'll, well, we'll count your second. Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item seven, our consent agenda. I'm gonna turn it over to our planning director for just a moment to speak to a change on that.
Yes. And the developer and the developer's representative here is here for two-seventeen Chival Drive. And the developer has requested to withdraw the submission. And they're prepared, if, if the, if the chair would like, to, to just explain, explain maybe why on that withdrawal. And then what would need to happen is, when we're looking at the consent agenda- And then what would need to happen is when we're looking at the consent agenda is to, um, recommend to, uh, vote to adopt the consent agenda, but leave out two seventeen Shible Drive. Okay, let me get to that point.
Would you all come up and speak, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Marty Koch, on behalf of the developer of two seventeen Shible. Um, at the May meeting, as you all will recall, our site plan, uh, was turned down, um, and denied. And following that denial, uh, we did make a request to reconsider that site plan with the hopes that we can make some, uh, revisions that would satisfy this board. Just recently, we have learned of, um, some of these concerns from some of the neighbors, um, have started some conversations with them. So we would like to explore with them whether there is some type of alternative design that would make maybe not everyone happy, but everybody find a, a compromise or a happy medium. So for that reason, um, we are okay at this point with the May denial of the site plan, standing, withdrawing our request for reconsideration to see if, um, a compromise can be accomplished. And if so, then we would talk with Mr. Free about how to get that back on the agenda so that, um, a, a compromise could be considered by this body. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, um, on item seven, is any other commissioners have anything on the consent agenda that they want to address individually that we'd need to pull off? Seeing no, seeing none. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with, with the subtraction of two seventeen Shible Drive. And all staff comments.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of two several, two seventeen Shible Drive being removed and withdrawn by the developer with all planning staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Silkwood. Ms. Barry, will you call the roll, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to need to abstain because of Grace Place. I make a monthly contribution.
Okay.
So does that mean that I must not go on the hold?
You can, you can vote on the consented. These are just the consent agenda items. We'll get to that a little bit later in the meeting. So you'd be okay to vote on this one.
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yeah.
Hardwick?
Yeah.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
That's all nine.
... made under development plans is Grace Place at New Shackle Island. And so, um, Dee, do you want to come up to speak on the present? I know you've had your speakers up here, but we're going to address this now. If you want to come up speaker, if you have somebody else you'd like to designate to speak.
I'm not. Maybe, maybe not. If we had before, I think we could have done it. Sorry. Um, if you guys didn't take, I wouldn't even have to talk down. Just that you have some information on what we do. So.
As many people have already shared this evening.
Dee, can you introduce yourself as well, please? I'm sorry, can you give us your address, too, please?
My name is Demajemane Cleve. And Grace Place is located at four oh one Walton Ferry Road in Hendersonville, Tennessee. I am the founder and executive director of Grace Place. It was born out of what I would like to call, what I do call confidently calling after serving on, uh, the staff at Long Hollow Baptist Church as the benevolence coordinator. And I received a lot of phone calls from single mothers who didn't have a place to go, where I could literally hear their children in the background as the mothers were crying on the phone, feeling very desperate and hopeless. So out of that position, Grace Place was born. Within two years, we had a full board of directors, our five oh one C three, and began, began operating in Hendersonville. We've been here for seven years. It's really exciting. Our seven-year anniversary is next month. We have been able to help hundreds of women and children rebuild their lives since we opened. We have a eighty-six percent success rate of families coming through our program and remaining independent once they leave. We have women who are married in this community now. We have homeowners in this community now. We have college graduates in this community now as a result of our programming. And they were literally homeless with nothing. Our program has been developed over time by a lot of trial and error. With the help of this incredible community, we are in a position to be able to expand in an enormous way. We're hoping we will have your support. Grace Place in our current capacity is able to help five families at a time, which equals the way that they rotate in and out to about twelve or fifteen a year, fifteen if we're really moving. We receive over two hundred applications a year for our services. We must be able to help more. The cost of rent, the cost of living is not going to come down in Hendersonville or Sumner, Sumner County. It is going to continue to get higher. The phone is going to continue to ring more. We have a plan. We have a proven track record. We have a success rate that is literally becoming renowned nationwide amongst other leaders that I am in contact with throughout the whole country. I want Hendersonville. It is the deepest desire of my heart for everybody from Hendersonville to be proud of Grace Place and what this community has built. Because this is not a one-person show. This has taken an entire community. We had a thousand people at our winter luncheon just in April. We have a ton of support. I can't tell the people in this room how grateful I am that you were all willing to come here and show and speak on our behalf. Truly, I don't even know what else I can offer to the conversation except that this campus will be able to expand our services to up to sixty-eight families at a time. Women will be able to go through our crisis stability program and transition into the additional units that will be as part, benefits as part of our campus, where they will be able to work, pay thirty percent of their income to live there. And they will be able to choose between a trade, homeownership, or a college degree while they live there. So that when they graduate from Grace Place's program, they will have a true asset, which is what changes the cycle of poverty in our families. We've been able to identify what works. And we are so excited to be in the position that we're in, that we're here tonight. And I'm so grateful that you guys have been willing to listen to us so far. And, um, I'm here for questions as far as the site's concerned, where we're looking at. Any technical questions? We have Andy Leith, our civil engineer here, so.
Timothy was staff lead director on this. And so I'm going to allow him to kind of present what's going on here for tonight. Timothy?
Thank you. Located at one twenty-six New Shackle. It's next to the Lakeview Church of Christ at the front. Roughly two-thirds of the site is owned, uh, general commercial. And the, the back one-third is owned industrial.
Commissioner Peter?
Thank you.
Who'd you call?
Thanks. Um, I have two questions. Is this property been purchased yet?
We are under contract with the hopes of closing in July.
Okay. And, uh, I have another question. I see a cemetery. What are y'all's plans to maintain that?
With great care and honor, but also I am kind of thinking about a Halloween fundraiser. No, we, we are fully committed to maintaining it with all the sacred dignity that it requires.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Hasty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I fully support Grace Ministries. I think they do an excellent job. And as a member of First Baptist Church, I, I'm sure I have supported you financially.
I recognize your name. Thank you very much.
But now, as a planning commissioner, I'm going to take Grace out of the picture. What we're doing is we're taking a commercial, industrial, retail area, and we're making it multifamily. Now, forget about Grace Industries right now, Grace Ministries right now. Traditionally, we're Hendersonville's tax base and... People react when you're putting something in their neighborhood. I can remember when Blue Ridge went in, the folks at Scottish Highlands said, "Oh, man, you're going to kill our property values." So people are reluctant at what's put into their neighborhood. Your facility, even though it's great and it's good and it provides a great service for the community, if we put that in some residential areas, I think there would be some backlash. People would say, "Don't want that in my backyard." And, you know, whether right, wrong, or indifferent, that's just reactions that planners and consultants hear at some time. Now, I don't think you have any opposition to where you're going. Traditionally, would not vote to remove that. I have done it in the past to, uh, take away commercial, retail, industrial, particularly for high-density. I've done it once. I know, uh, I traditionally, essentially don't like to do that. But I think this may be a rare exception that I think I'm going to go ahead and support. And good luck to you.
We are okay with rare support.
Commissioner Longmire?
Yes, as I said before, I'm not going to be able to vote on this because I do make a financial commission, uh, contribution monthly. And I think it would be considered by some to be a conflict of interest. However, obviously, since I give my money, I support the mission. And I think it's been very successful. As far as this location is concerned, I think it's a great asset. First of all, I'm going to lay you money that the trees are going to stay. And we are losing so many trees when we go through the development of property here. And these are big, old trees, not, not the builder's trees that they put in the new section in the cow field. So I think that that is an asset in my situation. The other thing is I can't imagine that anybody would object to this location because of its nature. And it will be more or less hidden. So I am in support, but I will not be able to verbally support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First of all, let me thank you for what you're doing in our community. Obviously, a very, uh, much-needed and excellent ministry. So thank you for what you've done. Um, this question really is more for Timothy, um, Mr. Witten with the planning staff. Would you, um, it, it looks like on the permitted use table, there are quite a few, um, requests as far as the permitted uses. Could we go through those individually and, and talk about those, if you would? If you would just read through them, maybe, and...
Sure. So the, uh, the request, the uses that are, uh, being requested, are assisted living facility, bed and breakfast, community residence large, which is more than eight persons, community residence small, eight persons or less, dwelling multifamily, dwelling single-family, dwelling townhome, home for the aged, independent living facility, educational facility, primary and secondary, government facilities and offices, public safety facility, public works facility and utility, place of worship, golf course, daycare center, adult or child, and daycare home, adult or child.
Thank you for that, Mr. Witten. And just a follow-up question. So a couple of these obviously catch my eye. As far as I've heard, you all are pretty adamant that you'd like to keep all of these requested uses. So what would be the use for a bed and breakfast or a golf course, um, at this location?
Yeah.
Let me jump on the bus on this. Um, there's some copy and paste stuff that we need to clean up, obviously. So there is no reason for golf course. Those are some of the uses listed in the zoning. And we just didn't appropriately whittle them out at the final stage of recent middle.
Okay, so my question would be, would you be okay if we remove those as permitted uses for this parcel?
Certainly. We're looking to get the multifamily element, the daycare with ancillary offices. And I think the rest of, I mean, there's not even room for the single-family or townhomes or anything like that. So we would be fine with that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Timothy, you're lit up down there. Did you have something you want to have? Commissioner Evans?
I, I'm new here. Is it possible? I, I'm, I'm real nervous about the property being under contract. And we're going to, we're going to give the Doris family, uh, a change in zoning. I'm for it, by the way. But, uh, if we, if we do that and your plan falls through in some way, we have just done what Commissioner Hasty said that, uh, he didn't want to do, nor do I. And that is rezone that piece of commercial property to multifamily if it's not being used for your, uh, project. So is, is it possible to make a rezone contingent on this particular use in this particular project?
I can address that. I can, I think I can address it. So definitely, this isn't straight zoning. This is a planned development. So there's a lot of things on the table, back and forth. This, that particular thing, there could be something. Typically, it'd probably be most appropriate from the developer, the applicant, on giving some sureties that are attached to that. Uh, our position of requiring those maybe isn't as strong of a position, even though it's a negotiated, um, uh, type of, uh, type of agreement. Uh, but putting some, some conditions on that, you know, would be, would be reasonable. The best thing that could happen is if the, uh, if the applicants had some basic things they were willing to agree to. And the commission, uh, would include those in the planned development.
I think that everyone understands what we're trying to accomplish here. So we're willing to work with the city to come up with anything that's legal and legal in binding. And I'm pretty sure that Grace Place would be willing to agree to. So, um, maybe we need to consult with some legal counsel to see what we can and cannot agree to, but we're willing to.
I haven't heard any absolutes in anything here. I'm still trying to get to that bottom line. Your, your deal with the Doris family is contingent upon a rezone. It has to be.
Yes.
So if we have a rezone contingent upon your deal with the Doris family and the fact that your program or your project will go on, I'm happy. But if we... Again, if we... If we do a blanket rezone to what we're talking about and your project falls through for whatever reason, then the Doris family has a very marketable piece of property that will be multifamily. So that's my concern. That's the only thing I'm worried about here.
And it's a valid concern because... And that's why we're willing to do whatever we need to do, whatever we can do legally to put those stipulations on to this plan.
I want to just kind of echo what Commissioner Evans said. I love what y'all are doing. I'm fully in support of what y'all do. Member of First Baptist Church as well. And so indirectly, I've given money as well that support another... A number of other nonprofits throughout the area, both personally and through my business. I've got... I love your heart. I love what you're doing. I've got kind of the same concerns that Commissioner Evans does, though, but also want to kind of look forward long-term, too. Because you were talking about during presentation, you've got, I think you said, over 200 applicants of this. You're adding a lot of space here in this, but you're going to be busting at the seams from the day you open up there on that. And so... And I hope y'all are in the position to do this five, 10 years down the road where you need another space somewhere just because you're providing that much care and that much support. I would like some sort of assurance and something that we can put in writing that this won't then be sold to somebody who wants to use it as a for-profit apartment complex. If another nonprofit could come in there, something that's another community service in there, that would kind of think ease everybody's concern. Because I think everybody's in agreement. They love what you're doing and want to see this project fully supported. Think it's an asset for our community. But want to kind of look in the short term, make sure that... Because land deals can fall apart. I mean, they fall apart all the time. I can't... I've only been on this commission for a little less than a year and a half. And I've seen a number of things that we've approved that once they've gone from here, they've fallen apart for whatever reason on that. I mean, there's a multitude of reasons they can fall apart. And so, you know, if we can get some... If we can get some surety in writing on things, I think that you would just... We'd sell through on stuff. And not to be presumptive, I think you'd get unanimous support, which... Because I think everybody's in agreement on this. And so I'd like for y'all to speak to that a little bit, your willingness there on that, please.
I have no problem to put on a document that says we never have any intention of selling this property. The problem with those kinds of requests is what can be legally held up and what can be legally binding? And when we researched doing something of that nature, I can say that all day long and we can put it in a document, but it won't be legally upheld. It can't be legally upheld. So I can say with all truth, honesty, and great conviction to make Hendersonville proud and to honor my commitment to the city that I love so much that we don't have any plans of ever selling the property. And we can put that in the notes. But the reality is, I can say it, but it doesn't... It isn't legally binding. Otherwise, we would have tried to come to terms with something like that already because we want you guys to feel at ease about this, that we don't... That we want this to be our headquarters if we even wanted to. So if we were busting at the seams and we wanted more, we would still be keeping this site. We would be just building more throughout the county. So I don't know how much that puts your mind at ease, but it's what I've got. Do you have anything you want to say?
Commissioner Silkwood.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just echoing what Commissioner Evans and Commissioner Chairman Coker said. So, you know, speaking to funding, you know, I think we all have the same concern. We support the ministry. We're very concerned, I know I am, that this will end up becoming multifamily housing from commercial and industrial, which is what we want more of in Hendersonville. So, you know, if I have some hesitation, it's there. What might help a little bit with that is knowing where the funding is coming from. Is this... Is there a grant involved? Is there... Where is your funding source? How much do you have? Can you start building right away? Where are you at in that process?
For the land contract, we are already approved for a CITC funding loan. And that is a program that's when you're building any kind of housing, you can borrow for 4% below prime. As far as making, you know, the land purchase happen, we are equipped to do that with cash. We don't want to because it's better business sense to keep our investments where they're at and do the CITC program. So as far as the land acquisition, that's fine. That's the cure. As far as our campaign, you have a roomful of people who are going to be giving to this campaign. We are 100% privately supported, United Way, the Memorial Foundation. And then, once we have our campus secure, I can actually begin to campaign and get the pledges. We did have a feasibility study done by Lighthouse Council back in the second quarter of 2020, which you can imagine was probably not the best time to be testing our donor base about what's possible and what's not. But that feasibility study, even in the midst of a pandemic, came back extremely favorable for us to be able to raise the funds for this program.
Director Ford.
I think possibly a way to address it... And I totally understand what you're saying about the long-term. You know, you can give us a letter that you won't resell it at some point in time in the future. The only thing I think maybe that we could do, if it's something that you're agree... Only if something that you're agreeable to, would be maybe put some type of condition on it that this approval is contingent upon Grace Place Ministries closing on the property. And then that way, you know, I think part of the concern that I think I'm sensing is we get all this approved and then one thing or another happens and it doesn't get built and you don't actually close on the property. And then now we have this planned development that's all ready for somebody. And, you know, as you can see on the thing, I mean, this is a homeless shelter with a daycare and everything, but it could just as easily be a multifamily project if it wasn't associated with Grace Place. So, you know... But I don't think that's something we can necessarily force you to do or anything. But if kind of what you were expressing...
On the purchase of the property? You're just trying to avoid it becoming something else in the event that we're not able to purchase it?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that those are all very plausible.
And we would just have to... They would probably have to check with their legal counsel. I'd have to check with ours just to make sure that's... But it seems that that would... That that condition, if the applicant is requesting that, that would be something, you know, that the fulfillment of the approval of this combined development plan is based on when they fully engage and they actually have control of the property. Now, the day after that, there really isn't anything other than what we've approved with the plan. But that would give... I think that's something possibly, if you are willing to give it, could be given to do that. On the other things, on the uses themselves that the commissioner was discussing, is it looked like to me, if you're willing to get rid of those other uses that you don't need, that would end up being dwelling multifamily, educational facility, primary, secondary, and daycare center, adult or child. So those would be the three. And then the office use would just be accessory to the daycare and to the multifamily. So those would be those limited uses that would be associated with that.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Evans.
That doesn't make sense to me. It's... We can't tell you what to do with your property in perpetuity. I'd hate for anybody to tell me that I can't ever sell my house if I decide not to live in it. So we can't do that. What I'm concerned about is the immediate transfer.
I get it. Yes. I understand.
So once it's transferred to you, hey, I'm good. I'm good. I just don't want to give a zoning... I don't want it to be for a zoning change that would lay a new deal in somebody else's lap that... I just want to happen what you're representing is going to happen.
I understand that.
That simple.
Yeah. July 15th.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none and hearing none, this needs to be addressed in two separate votes because what we have is we have an amendment to the land use plan, one to change character area change from employment center to suburban living. So we need to vote on that first. And so I will entertain a motion... I'll entertain a motion. I'm not even going to suggest what it is. I'm just going to entertain a motion. Or I'll make a motion since I know it's offered. I'm going to make a motion to recommend a character area change from employment center to suburban living. Commissioner Evans, was that your second? Okay. We've got... We have a motion and a second. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire? Peterson? Silkwood? Slattery?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
That's all nine.
The second part of this course here now is the motion to approve the rezoning request. And we'll entertain a motion on that. And please add to it to include all staff comments and the kind of contingencies that we've talked about a little bit as well. And need some findings of facts along with this motion as well.
Commissioner Longmire.
Yes. I want to be sure that I'm abstaining on the correct part of this, too. So what I've done is all right.
You're fine.
I need to abstain on this next one.
I'm going to let the director address that.
And I think, and we may run into this quite often when we have nonprofits that are... That are supporting the commission. But every one of theirs is quite generous. So like in this case, what you're sharing, that you give money to this organization, I mean, it's based on what you want to do if you want to abstain. But it's okay for you to vote as long as you just kind of express it and just, you know, just... You could just say, "Hey, I just want to recognize that I do give money to the organization, but that on its basis isn't impacting my vote." I think that that's an acceptable disclosure for you to go ahead and be participating in discussion and vote if you choose to do it. So I just kind of wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just add to that from a personal sense. I appreciate your candor in doing that there. And I would probably defer to you the same way on that. But I don't think we actually have to declare then unless you stood to benefit financially then on that or abstain from voting then unless you stood to benefit financially from it on that. But we can talk parliamentary issues later on that. You can. But you don't have to. Okay.
Beth, you can vote. You can vote.
Well, I am looking for a motion here on this. This would be for the rezone on this. Yes.
This is where we have to have specific findings of fact.
Correct. Correct. Yes. Yeah.
Including... I'm sorry. Including the abbreviated list of proposed permitted uses.
Correct.
So I will make the motion with the findings of fact that it is in agreement with the land use plan. There's no significant adverse effect upon adjoining property owners. And the conditions affecting the area have changed to sufficient extent to warrant the amendment and the rezoning. And with the other items that we've talked about with the reduced... Say again? The... Yes. The uses. And staff comments. Sorry.
Second.
We have...
Question. Okay. Questions? You've seconded this motion? Okay. But have we made absolutely sure that the contractual part has to go through first? So that means that we're leaving this thing open. If we vote yes, it is wide open. So if this falls through, it's still wide open.
Yes. Sorry. It just wasn't... It just wasn't included in the motion. If you add that to the motion that probably the language...
So the motion that this is contingent upon you guys closing upon the property and that should you not close on the property, this would revert back to the zoning as it is today.
Yes. So, yeah. And so kind of what would happen is the fulfillment of the combined development plan would not completely complete until that they actually purchase the property. You know? Yes. That's correct. So you're good. You're good.
So I'm good. Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Longmire? We have a motion and a second. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire? Peterson? Silkwood? Slattery?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
That's all nine. That's all nine. That's all nine.
Here. I don't have a gavel, but I'm gonna call us back to order here if I can get everybody's attention on it, please. My water bottle's not cutting it as a gavel right here, but that's a. Folks, I'm gonna go and call us back to order here if we can go and get restarted because we've got, we've still got several things left on the agenda for this evening. Um, next under item eight for development plans is we have the final development plan for Near Water Place. And Grant, I believe you have the lead on that one, so kick us off, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this was the item that was deferred, this and the site plan were the items that were deferred from, uh, last, uh, ma- last meeting. And basically, the main thing we had on these were the elevations needed to be corrected and, and resubmitted uh, to meet the standards of the, the preliminary development plan approval. That's, that's already been approved, um, some months back. And, uh, the elevations were changed and improved, uh, to be compliant with the, uh, PDP. Uh, and then, uh, it's particularly the two things that were on there was the, they had the, the gray white tones uh, rather than the, the, the various colors that were used on the FDP submittal. And then, uh, they did add much more articulation between the, uh, between the, the fronts there. You could see there, there's, and, and the rears, uh, which, which is, uh, more compliant with what was approved with that, that preliminary development plan. So, uh, we, we are good with that on the staff end and, uh, we, we feel that does, uh, that is compliant with, with what was actually approved with that, that PDP approval.
Thank you, rep. Lynn, would you like to come up? Didn't we know you, but if you would introduce yourself and just.
My name is Lynn Ely. I'm with Land Solutions Company. Happy to answer any questions.
Do you have, do you want to add anything to what Grant said before we ask the question?
I'll speak to it just a little bit. I'll, uh, first start by saying that, um, we are in agreements with what little remaining staff comments that we have. Uh, we appreciate the staff working with us over the past thirty days. I was here before you and asked for a deferral uh, so that we could go back and, and work on these elevations and I, and I'm hoping that we've gotten to a point where, um, as, as Grant might have said, that we are in substantial compliance with the zoning that was approved by Board of Mayor Alderman for the project. Um, we went a little further than that to, to work with staff to do, as Grant mentioned, some articulation and meaning. Uh, we pushed some buildings back and forward or units back and forward to give a little more character, added some more detail to gables and things of that nature. Uh, just to try to dress it up. And, um, we're proud of what we came up with. Um, we again appreciate staff for everything that they helped us, uh, with to get to that point. And, um, I'll answer any questions you might have beyond that.
Open up the commissioners for questions, comments. Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, more, more of a comment. Um, I do think that you've gotten close enough to the original elevations in the plan development, um, preliminary plan development that, you know, they match up for the most part with what we see today. However, just a comment, so you will know I am going to be voting against this because I, from the beginning, think that we've created in, in getting this, in rezoning this parcel and creating this, uh, multifamily complex here. We are creating a very dangerous intersection, especially for that left turn egress. Um, you know, the whole part about trying to get to the, the gas station to get to the stoplight, I'm not okay with that. I don't like the idea of people pulling out left, trying to make a left turn right in front of two gas stations and on-ramp to three eighty-six. So for those reasons and not for the elevation, so I'll be voting no. Thank you.
And I'm happy to speak to that if you'd like. Um, you know, there was a lot of deliberation over access to the site and, uh, what is possible. You know, by right, every piece of property has to have access. Um, this property was previously zoned for a much more intensive use. We evaluated those uses. Uh, we came up with a use that is, uh, a very low impact use, particularly, uh, when you add it to the number of trips that are produced for the convenience store and the Waffle House. Um, it, it's, so it's, it's a very low, uh, impact or drop in the bucket per se to what's occurring at that intersection now. Um, we voluntarily went beyond that to work with staff to make sure that we do provide a stub to future undeveloped property that in the future will allow secondary access to this property and more alleviate that. Um, so, and, and, and all of that was, was balled up into a traffic study that was reviewed and approved by staff prior to the zoning of the property. Uh, which led us here today really just to make sure we're crossing Ts and dotting Is uh, to ensure that we're meeting that zoning requirement. Um, so, uh, I don't, nothing has changed with regard to access. Um, so I, I would respectfully request your vote for approval for those reasons.
Other questions, comments from commissioners?
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes, thank you. Um, the elevations look much better, thank you. Um, I have three questions. Um, one from the planning department is, um, I, I see there's, uh, parking, the garages and parking and, and street parking. Is that going to be wide enough for cars to park on both sides of the, the, the drive or the street or whatever you call it?
Do, just let me. Uh, yes, sir. Uh, we, we'd looked at this and, uh, we'd looked at this, actually, this is something that, that Public Works and Fire also looked at in terms of, uh, how, how well it could be accessed. And, uh, there is a mix of the on-street parking with the, uh, as well as the garage parking and the, uh, off, off, uh, kind of like the extra parking spaces there, but, but, uh, they, in, in looking at it with, uh, all departments reviewing that, they, it was determined that it should, it, it should uh, be wide enough for, for proper access.
Okay, good. Thank you, Grant. And, uh, Public Works had a question here, and I don't know if you've seen this, the final staff reports and comments, but they're.
Yes, sir.
Making a point that there is issue with a sidewalk, I believe, with Waffle House? Has that been addressed and, and ironed out?
Uh, addressed, yes. Ironed out, no. We have, we have received, uh, a callback from Waffle House. That's a corporately owned store and corporately owned property. So I've got them to call me back. I've shown them the plan. There's not been any opposition to it. Um, I've made a point to, to staff that in our, in our opinion, we have by right the ability to connect that sidewalk. It is an ingress egress easement that we can connect to by right. But being a good neighbor, we've reached out just to say, hey, we'd like to connect here. Do you have a problem with it? Um, and, and verbally, the answer is no, but we'll work out some paperwork, I'm sure. Um, and verbally, the answer is no, but we'll work out some paperwork, I'm sure, get something in writing that we can happily provide to staff, um, if need be. Uh, I, I don't know anybody at a commercial level for Waffle House that would be opposed in adding foot traffic to one of their stores. So, um, I don't, I don't suspect any issue with connecting up a sidewalk.
Okay. And, uh, one last question. What about the stormwater drainage? Has that, um, been addressed?
It since has, yes. Since, since this staff report, we've submitted site construction plans. That required us to go back out and do a little more surveying. But yes, we have now in the site construction plans that have been submitted to, uh, the stormwater or, or... Is it the stormwater coordinator? I, I'm not sure. The department, Public Works, somebody in Public Works has got those now and, and comfortable with it. So, that comes at sort of a later stage than this, when we actually get a permit in hand to go move dirt.
Okay.
But we're good there, too.
All right. Thanks. That's, uh, all the questions I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I'll just kind of add a comment here. Um, I just wanted to thank the applicant for kind of working with us. I think it's, this goes back several months, but I was against this project from the start on that. But I appreciate the way that you've worked with staff, worked with us, been upfront on, on things on that. And got a lot better product today because of that. There's the old adage about how sausage is made, and this is a perfect example of that. So, I just want to thank you for continuing to work with us on this, so.
We, we appreciate that. We think, we think we ended up at a better place, too, so.
Good. Uh, but with that, um, what I'd like to do, because you've got, you actually have two items on our agenda. You have the development plan and you have the site plan, um, as well. I want to check with Director Free here to make sure that that's okay to deal with these simultaneously. I know we'll need two different motions, but to go, go with these simultaneously. Grant, you're listed on that as well. Do you have anything that you want to add that you didn't address here, since we're gonna address these at the same time?
Uh, no, sir. I, I don't think so. And, uh, um, and yeah, I, I think i- if Keith thinks so, I, I believe that's, uh, it's okay to wrap those up and, and, and one, you know, move those together.
Okay, thank you. With that, then, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final development plan for Near Water Place as presented.
I will. I'll make a motion to approve the final development plan and to combine it with the site plan and that we approve both.
We have... Can, can you add with all staff comments?
With all staff comments.
Uh, we'll give you a second.
Yeah, I just, I just need to, to know that the site plan is contingent, it's contingent upon approval of the final development plan, and the final development plan is in substantial compliance with the preliminary development plan.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the final development plan with all staff comments, and that is in substantial compliance with the preliminary development plan, and that the site plan upon approval of the final development plan, that we combine them together.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hardwick.
And I will second it.
A second from Commissioner Altizer. Um, Lauren, would you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood? Slattery?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
All right. That is seven and two. The passes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the site plan for Hallmark Hyundai, the addition. And Timothy, you have this one, so would you kick us off, please?
I'm sorry. This is for the Hyundai. It's located at the corner of West Main Street and Center Point Road. Uh, it's zoned general commercial. This is, um, this is not the, the satellite parking lot that y'all approved a while back. This is where their, their, uh, existing building is. Their request is to add on to their building an eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty-square-foot addition to their rear of their existing building. Um, and along with that, they're proposing some cosmetic changes to the architecture and materials of the, of the existing building as well. They have, uh, uh, agreed with all staff comments.
Do we have a representative from property on here? Could you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Paulus Hubert, and I represent Hallmark Hyundai. And we appreciate it. We appreciate you guys looking at this. We appreciate you guys talking to us. And, um, if you have any questions I can address, and, uh, I have my architect and engineer and, and other, other supporting people here as well, so.
Do you have anything that you want to add to...
No, sir. What we're doing, so just, just what, uh, Mr. Whitton here said. So, we own the Hallmark Hyundai building, uh, the dealership. And what we are doing is we're upgrading the facility to make it image-compliant with Hyundai's new guidelines. So Hyundai came out about a year and a half ago and said, these are new image guidelines, what it should look like and so on. And there've been a lot of staff comments that we've taken to and gone back to Hyundai and said Hendersonville would like to see this change or this change. And Hyundai's been accepting of those changes, and we've been very appreciative of the comments you guys provided. And are absolutely more than willing to do whatever you guys need to do, so we can kind of, uh, go to the next step.
Commissioner Longmire? Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you. Um, just a question. Uh, so this is showing the service bay entrance is gonna be on the front, Main Street-facing side of the building?
Yes, ma'am.
Currently, it's on the Center Point side?
Well, same, same position it's in now. So, as you're from Main Street looking at it, when you look at the building, the service side is on the right side. It'll remain in that right side. The, the building, the building itself is, the front of the building, as it faces Main Street, is gonna be the same. The big addition on the backside, that Mr. Whitton was talking about, is on the backside on the service bays. But we're gonna expand the service shop area.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. That's an existing canopy. We're just enclosing it.
Sir, I don't mean to interrupt. Gee, mine's stepping up the mic so we hear it a little bit better, so.
Yes, I'm Jeff Blackley. I'm the architect that's working with the owners. Um, just on that, that's an existing canopy. That's where they have their service drop-off now. They're just enclosing it to make it a better experience, you know, for each, each of the car owners as they deliver their car for service, so.
That's still gonna be the drop-off point? That's not... Drop an oil pan and do your thing.
No, 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 no. Yes, yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none and hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the site plan as presented with all staff comments. We've got a motion and a second. And Lauren, we call the roll, please.
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yeah.
Hardwick?
Yeah.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood? Slattery?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have site plan for Rally Point Motor Condos. And Timothy, this one is yours, so let you take this.
Yeah, I, I think the, uh, applicants had a fly-through. Did y'all want to do that first thing, or?
Yes, sir, if you don't...
Okay, yeah. They have a fly-through. They'd like to show, kind of gives you a, um, a visual of the site before I get into the, the staff report. Did y'all want to roll that? Okay. I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, so this is a, this is a four-point-four-five-acre, um, site that's located just west of Hendersonville Produce. It's on general commercial and has obtained a gen- a conditional use permit, uh, from the BZA for a sort of a modified self-storage facility where each unit is privately owned and is designed for the storage and display of motor vehicles, motorcycles, boats, et cetera. The BZA put a number of conditions of approval on the use, which are listed in your staff report. They are requesting four waivers. Um, but before I get into these waivers, I'd kind of like to just talk about waivers for a second. Um, out, outside of the context of this particular development, um, so, as y'all know, staff works with, uh, project applicants to obtain compliance with our building design standards. And we strain every muscle and nerve to get people to comply with, uh, all the design standards in their totality. But, uh, the design standards, as they're written, they recognize that there are unique, um, sites and uses, regions of the city, uh, that need to be spoken to by the particular architecture. And so through the waiver process, the design standards provide flexibility to the architects and to the planning commission to arrive at creative design solutions that meet the spirit, um, of the ordinance and, and speak to the, the site as well and, and the use. Um, if those standards are applied across the board, absolutely the same to every building, you'd end up with a pretty monotonous, um, building environment, building fabric across the city. Building, uh, building design standards can, they can certainly elevate poor design, um, mediocre design. They could elevate that. But by the same token, they can also filter out superlative design or stifle creativity on the part of the architect by taking a one-size-fits-all approach. Um, that's why we've, that's why the waiver process is written into, into the design standards. That does make it more difficult for the planning commission, because you have to consider things on a very detailed, case-by-case basis. But it pays off in the end with a better-built environment if it's done in a thoughtful and, and considered way. So with that said, uh, the, the four, the four waivers they're requesting, three of them have to do with building design, design standards. The first one, uh, the standards require a minimum of sixty percent glazing, i.e. windows and, and doors on the front walls facing a street. The, uh, Rally Point has provided fifty-four, fifty-four percent on their fronts as designated by those, those red lines there in that graphic. And they're requesting a waiver for the remaining six percent. The second waiver they're requesting is that our standards, uh, state that, uh, split-faced block may be considered on a case-by-case basis as a, as an allowed trim material. It goes on to state that for facades which will not be visible to the public realm, split-faced block may be considered by the planning commission. So Rally Point is proposing, uh, split-faced block, uh, on the facades indicated, uh, in red. There, there is an updated graphic that y'all should have. It was handed out to y'all. It kind of shows in better, in better detail exactly what is gonna be split-face versus brick and stone. So, as you can see with that updated graphic, they have provided, um, predominantly brick and stone on the front facades facing the street, as well as, uh, turning the corners, uh, to provide brick and stone on kind of the front sides, the, the interior sides of the building, uh, of the buildings, as well as the kind of the back exterior sides and the, the rear facing the railroad track, rear-facing, kind of abutting up to Hendersonville Produce. That's where they're requesting, uh, split-faced block. And y'all can, y'all can kind of address the particulars, uh, when you speak as to why you're requesting that. The third, uh, waiver request is that design standards state that building facade should have a clearly articulated base, middle, and top, which usually you see that as a, a water table, which is, um, the lower section that might be two, three, four feet tall from grade, and then a cornice across the top, or some kind of defined band, articulated band across the top, and then the middle field being the, the middle wall. Rally Point have, they've made significant revisions, not, not just on this, but across the board. They've, they've been working with staff since before COVID, uh, to really refine this and get it as, as close as possible, um, to the standards. But they are requesting, that, that they have provided that articulation in one way or another, uh, on the, the most visible sides facing Main Street. But they are requesting on the interior sides of the buildings, uh, the, the rear, rear-facing railroad track facing Hendersonville Produce, requesting, they'll, they'll have a split-faced block, as you can see there, from grade to the top of the roof. They will have some colored bands at the top. Um, but otherwise, it'll just be one, one material from top to bottom. Uh, the fourth waiver they're requesting, um, our design sta- or landscaping standards require a ten-foot landscape strip, uh, from the front parking bay to their front property line. As you can see in that graphic there on page six, uh, the, the red wedges are where they're proposed parking encroaches, varying degrees up to about three feet, uh, into the required ten-foot landscape strip. So they're requesting a waiver for those, those wedges there. They have agreed to all staff comments. That concluded my report.
Thank you, Mr. Whitton. Um, with the developers, come up and introduce yourself, and if you have some things that you'd like to add before we get into discussion, please.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of planning commission staff, my name's Randy Harper with Goodwood Mills K Wood. I'm the civil engineer on the project, and, uh, we have the ownership team, uh, JR and Carol Ernst. I'm sure most of you know them, longstanding members in the community. Also got Owen Hardcastle. Hardcastle Construction's gonna be, uh, constructing the project. Glad to be here. Uh, the, uh, Rally Point Motor Condos is, is kind of a new concept. You're starting to see, uh, especially in the kind of the southwest, uh, part of the US especially, kind of plays to, uh, everybody's love of cars. And, uh, it's kind of been something that JR's been working on, him and his wife Carol, for a long time. And, uh, like Timothy said, uh, they've been working with, uh, staff on elevations, things of that nature, uh, for about the last couple of years. And, uh, um, we respectfully would like to ask for your approval. We'd also, uh, you know, any questions that you guys might have, we'd be glad to, to answer those. JR can, can speak to a lot to some of the changes that have been made, uh, with the elevations and those type things. But, uh, we would like to have your vote, please. Thank you.
I'm sure there's some questions, so we'll just kind of probably start there.
Questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Silkwood?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Well, thank you for bringing this to Hendersonville. I've never heard of or seen anything quite like this. I think it's pretty unique, and, um, I personally think it would be a great addition to Main Street. But I do have a few questions. Um, I'm not at all familiar with the concept. Are these units for sale? Are they for rent? What are they priced at if they are for sale, if they are for rent? What?
Great questions. Great questions. Um, the units are for sale. They're condominiums. And, uh, they can be rented by the condo owners, but we put a restriction on. They're gonna work with the BZA of six-month minimum on there. So, um, typically, owners will, will typically buy and, and use them themselves.
Okay, so they can be sublet?
They can.
By the owner, correct?
By an owner, um, but it has to be for at least six months.
Six months minimum.
On there. That's kind of an industry standard, as we traveled the country and met with owners of other units that were successful. That kind of be, was the boilerplate issue that everybody had, was six months for rentals.
And how much would a typical unit sell for?
The unit started around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, um, and go up to around three-seventy-five for the base, the majority of them. There's a few larger ones.
And then the BZA, um, put a restriction on there where it's not living quarters.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. And again, that, that was kind of commonplace, as we traveled and met with other owners and stuff. That was very common. So, um, when we worked with the BZA, we kind of took a lot of what we found and built that in, both on the residential accommodations, on how to allow businesses in there, um, and, you know, make sure you're not affecting the enjoyment of the other owners or creating traffic issues and stuff. So, we included all that in, uh, kind of in the zoning.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one point of clarification on it. Um, I didn't hear you mention that, but my understanding, there's also limitation, I guess, in your covenants, too, as the number of ones that would be allowed to be rented overall. covenants too, as the number of ones that would be allowed to be rented overall. If I remember correctly on that.
The, each owner could rent theirs if they chose to. But typically, from what we found, that's, that's kind of the rarity on there. It's not a, normally if, what we experienced was somebody may buy two with the hopes of, or plans of one day growing into the second one, and so they may rent the adjacent unit for a period of time until that. But we didn't come across anywhere rental was the predominant thing on there.
Commissioner Hasty.
Are there restrictions on what can be done in the unit? In other words, I know it's for storage of automobiles and boats and classic cars, this sort of thing. It's not going to wind up with one being an automobile detail shop and another guy being a repair shop and next thing you know, down the line, that sort of thing? Or what sort of restrictions do you have?
Great question. Again, that goes into what we wrote into the BZA on there. You can, you have to have what's called a quote-unquote "paper business," where you can't have visitors, you cannot have any storage outside, you can't create excess noise, you know, basically it's not conducive for someone being successful at conducting a business like that. So then the covenants and restrictions for the homeowners can put another level if someone is doing something like that to enforce it all the way up to enforcing someone to sell their unit. So if someone were to try to come in there and create a muffler shop or something like that, you know, it, it doesn't typically work on there because they don't have access to do something like that.
You say restrictions on visitors?
Restrictions on the, well, restrictions on business visitors on there. It's, it's not set up for people to have business visitors come and go. Does that answer your question on that?
Yes, I, you know, I was just concerned, you know, I figured you'd have some sort of restrictions, covenants, this sort of thing.
Yeah.
With a condo association that would...
It's 258 pages, and we're still hammering through the fine details on there.
You know, I'm sure that there's going to be a car show up there, Mr. Ernst has them over in his place.
Then there might be one or two.
And there'll be one here, you know, just reserve me a spot for my vet.
Exactly.
Commissioner Slattery.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for bringing this to Hendersonville. I'm terribly intrigued. I'm not a car person. I'm not looking for a condo for my car. But I have a lot of questions just out of curiosity. So you, you touched on covenants. In addition to the purchase price, is this an HOA kind of situation?
It is an HOA.
So they are binding covenants and bylaws?
Yes.
Okay. Vehicle size? Is this everything for, I heard boats, so is this not just automobiles?
Cars, boats, RVs.
Coaches, okay.
Motor homes.
Are they all the same size?
No, the smallest units are 25 feet wide by 40. The largest unit is 50 foot wide by 55 foot deep. We did one of the buildings, the building to the right there is 55 deep, set to accommodate, you know, anybody who has a larger boat.
So around the commercial activity, will you have sales of any kind of keychains, for lack of a better description? Will there be retail that you'll do from that clubhouse look that we saw?
Not really. I mean, if someone wants to buy a rally point shirt, I'm sure I'd probably try to find a way to sell that.
There you go. You could probably come up with one. Okay, great.
You know, that's probably about it.
And then, I'm still not clear on what an owner could do with their condo in addition to housing their own private vehicles. Could someone have a customizing shop in there or vinyl overlay on a car? Could they do that kind of business there?
You know, inside the units, you know, hypothetically, yes, they could. It's an expensive location for something like that where, because they couldn't really store excess cars or vehicles or anything, they'd have to kind of one-off, go pull out, get one, bring it in, pull it inside, close the door. You know, as we've traveled, you know, most of them, all of them are pretty much personal use. We met a gentleman in Texas who, the father and son who partnered in it, the father was in a quartet, and they practiced singing upstairs, and the son had a kit car that he was building downstairs. So, but it's, it's more usages like that. We didn't really come across technical business usages of there. There were some that people had, they did have some small businesses on there, but not anything that required any visitors.
So these are off-property man caves and she sheds? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I can do that.
I don't like to call it man cave or anything.
Or she shed, that's fine, that's fine. And, and as far as access, is it 24 hours a day for the owners?
It is 24 hours a day. It's surveillance by video, and then it's accessible via your app on your phone for both gate and unit access on there.
So it's fully lit?
Fully lit, yeah.
24 hours or, you know?
Correct.
From 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, it's fully lit inside the gates?
Correct. We have a lighting system in there that backs the lights down after hours.
Okay, all right. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any questions? Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you. JR, I'm going to need two condos. No, this is an amazing product that you're bringing to town, and I appreciate that. I know cars are expensive, and I have a question. Does each condo have its own sprinkler system?
Correct. Each condo does have its own sprinkler system. Okay, yes. Each, each building has its own fire line to it and fire department connection to it also.
Okay, perfect. Just looking after everyone's safety because I know cars are expensive.
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Longmire.
Yes, the building that Cliff has had his cars in.
Yes, ma'am.
Where is this in relation?
It is, it's right next to it. If you have the drawing there, it's in the upper-left corner of the drawing, the big rectangle.
One that says metal building with brick trim.
Yeah, Dad would probably be mad at me if he knew I described it that way, but that's, that's what I put on there, so.
So this is going to be just in front of it?
It is. Our long-term plans are to eventually, as we downsize, downsize his car collection, is to incorporate into that and carry the architecture over onto that building.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Slattery.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just one more. How far is the driveway entrance to the condo complex from the turn signal at Thornton's at Saundersville Road? Long enough?
It's far enough. I mean, you know, it's, the nice thing about this usage, and we've talked to staff about it, is as Carol and I've traveled around the country during the week, these are pretty quiet, especially during business hours and high-traffic hours. You know, they start to pick up in the evenings, a little bit after work, and then kind of on weekends. And so having gone in and out of that site hundreds of times, you know, it's kind of a good fit for the traffic pattern that's there, better than anything else that we could think of.
Okay. I would only offer a comment that as the goat farm continues to be discussed, and we think about that mess that is getting onto Vietnam vets right there, adding more to within a half-mile of that light, is just something that I think we have to be mindful of.
Exactly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Director Free.
Yeah, and I just might mention the future underpass that's going to go under the railroad track. Is it, sorry, the future, the future underpass that's going under the railroad tracks, that'll be just to the west of this property. And eventually, so eventually that, that intersection up there on that side, that will, that will actually be closed off. And I might just mention, I don't typically comment on traffic-related issues. I leave that to, to the engineers and Public Works in our City Engineers Office. But I do, I do, I do like this from what it could have been from a traffic generating standpoint with what it's, what it's, what it's zoned right now. I like this, that it's not generating a lot of traffic. I mean, this could have easily been, you take the middle out of it, and this could have been a strip center that had 15 businesses or something, and, you know, something real active that really generate a lot of traffic. So that's one thing. I don't really comment a lot on the traffic stuff. I leave that to Public Works. But I do like this versus what it could have been if it was something else that was a little bit more intensive use, especially, I've got those same concerns about Main Street and kind of that access right through there. So, so that's a good thing.
I don't want to get lost in the weeds on that, but since you all brought it up with traffic, and I believe you brought up specifically that underpass eventually coming under the train tracks there someday. It's, is the ground, is the parcel set up that if and when that does happen, that you all could have an access point that would connect to that as well on that?
To that parcel that cuts through?
Yes.
It is not.
Okay.
It's not.
Okay. And that was just more curiosity than anything else on that, because I'm not holding my breath on that happening anyway, but it's just a...
I'm not either.
But that, like I said, just curiosity, but a comment that I have is just, I'm super excited about this project, and we have the opportunity to talk about this a little bit, and I appreciate you indulging the questions that I had, some of them from a place of ignorance, but I have no shame, so I'll ask questions on that, like to get the answers to, but no, just appreciate what you're doing.
We're excited about it, and we're excited about having it here in Hendersonville.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Altizer.
I'm just ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I'll move to accept with all staff comments. All staff, oh, oh, yeah, and all four waivers that you have requested.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
And Coker.
Yes.
That's all nine.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Happy evening.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have item 10, staff-level projects that have been approved. Director Free, do you want to give us a rundown of these, please?
Yeah, nothing, nothing, nothing super significant, and I'm fine to skip right through those to projects pending.
I am A-OK with that, so item 11, staff-level projects pending, if you want to go through this.
Yeah. The only one I might just highlight is Cajun Steamer. I believe that's a restaurant. It's going to be located at the end over here on this new strip center that's sort of south of McAllister's, you know, right in that area. So that's kind of, that's kind of exciting. That should be a nice addition, and nothing to really comment on the other items.
Item 12, we have, on the agenda, we have first a resolution recommending acceptance of the dedication of the completed streets in Waterford Village, Phase 1. This is Lakeside Park Drive. And Director Free, you want to tell us a little bit about this?
Yeah, this has already been to the Public Works Committee, BOMA, and they have, they have recommended it, and recommendation from here go directly to BOMA at their next meeting for approval. And everything is in order.
Commissioner Peterson, did you have a question or comment?
I do. I have a question for Director Free, and it's a point of reference. Center Point Park subdivision is not a subdivision, correct?
Yes, that, that's associated with the Jeep dealership, and I believe that's a lot consolidation that was a part of a requirement for their site plan.
Okay.
To kind of clean up their lot.
Someone had asked me about the new subdivision, and I feel bad because I didn't know anything about it.
Oh, no, that's okay. That's just the Jeep dealership needing to, I think they're combining lots, yeah, combining lots over there, but it's something they had to do that was contingent, their site plan was contingent upon getting this, getting this complete.
Okay. Just needed clarification. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
I'll move to accept the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Altizer. Can we get a second?
Second.
A second for Commissioner Silkwood. Lauren, would you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
And Coker.
Yes.
That's all nine.
Next, we have the zoning text amendment and re-adoption miscellaneous changes, and this is, we're going to turn it over to Director Free.
Yes. And I will try to, I will progress through this fairly quickly, but as we go, some of these, we may want to engage deeper. The majority of these, probably 90% of this, we did discuss it a few months ago in the work session. So a lot of these were the things we presented, or some of it is the, what came about from the comments that the, that the planning commission had. If everybody, I'll, it'll be up on the screen, but if everybody can grab this document right here, this is what I'm going to go page by page by, and I'll just go through what the change is, and then anybody get my attention, we can go, we can go deeper in it, but I'll try to move, move along fairly quickly. I will acknowledge Caitlin Shin, she's right over here. She put all of this together, and I mean, there's a whole lot of work, but it really helps with the transparency. And one thing that's really good is, we're going to have all these documents that are going to be, you know, the process we went through and all the detail of why we did this. And then 10 years from now, when people are looking back at it, wondering, why did they do that? They'll have documents that kind of explain what was, what was going on in their mind at that time. I'll just start on the first, first page of this document. Let me get this thing open here. Okay, the first thing, and I'm on page one of 84. Everybody good there? This is what mine looks like, so. Everybody in there? Okay, here we go.
It's 84 pages.
Yeah. Hang on, here we go. Okay, just those two items there, those are just simple things. You know, we're not a planning region anymore, so we've removed that from the whole document. Just putting the date that it was adopted. If we go to page two, adding language for a text amendment, HPC, public hearing and published notice. And so what that is, is like what we're doing right now actually was not required to have a public hearing or required to have notice. And so what we're doing, we went ahead and did it, but we want to put that in there, so we're adding to the opportunity for folks to comment when there's text amendments. So that's what that is. That second thing is just adding language that we discussed at our work session about BZA notice and adding signage. So we'll do signs that'll let people know if they're driving by something that's going before the BZA. It'll do that. And what we'll do too is, we haven't, we'll, we'll have signs, but they won't look like our zoning ordinance sign, so it's not confusing that it says zone change. We'll probably do them just a little bit smaller and a different color so that we'll know when somebody calls us what they're, you know, what's, what they're referring to if they don't know the specific address. Page three. I mean, BOMA is going to approve the zoning, but once that's done, if their final development plan is in substantial compliance, then there's really, there's really nothing to over, uh, over notify, you know, people about because there's really not a whole lot. We don't have public hearing, uh, you know, there's not, there's not a whole lot, you know, to do on that. It's just a process to go through.
I, I guess where I'm getting at, and I just would like, like the situation with apartments over here in Indian Lake Village on that.
Yes.
I would like there to be something where there's, and I understand there's not a public hearing that would correspond with that, but for folks to kind of know when something substantial like that's happening. Other than just be kind of tied in on that. And I'd like to see.
Yes.
We would post something on that.
I see what you're, I see what you're, um, we would do something on that. Okay, let's, um, can you just make a note of that? Caitlin, you know what he's referring, you're, you're talking about on a final development plan ad use?
Okay, yeah, that's, that's where it should be better than on that. So.
There's a mailed notice.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to see something posted just for folks that are driving by, just so they kind of know what's going on in the community on something like that.
And let's see, part of it is, does that, Lauren, that doesn't trigger a, a public hearing though, does it? Does it? On an adding use? Yeah, it does. It does trigger it. So yes, we can, we can look at that and then what we can do is if we adopt this this evening to move forward, then what we can do is we'll make that note Caitlin. That we'll look at final development plan and add, add notice that's equivalent to other notices and we'll make sure to get that, get that corrected on there. So I, we can do that. Yeah, that's no problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that was five and six and we've already did seven. Uh, so another reference document. We already did eight, I explained that one. Now we're on nine, 10, 11, 12. On nine, that's just some inconsistencies. This 10, this is one we probably need to talk about a little bit. Uh, I have added, um, brewery taproom is already allowed, uh, in, uh, commercial. And, uh, I'm looking at the possibility, it's allowed in commercial, industrial and heavy commercial, commercial as a permitted use. I'm looking to extend that as a conditional use, uh, in, um, in Old Town Commercial and MXC. You know, looking at a brewery, brewery taproom. And what a brewery taproom is, that area there, uh, you don't have that, but what a brewery taproom is, is, is a retail cell of beer, wine and liquor manufactured on the premise and the retail cell of shirts, mugs and other associated products. So it's, they're selling, they're selling alcohol, but it's alcohol that's produced, you know, there on the facility is what, if it fits in within that. So what I was looking at is, uh, giving that the opportunity in Old Town Commercial, MXC and also Neighborhood Commercial. Where that it could be, uh, it could be allowed as a conditional use that would give them the opportunity, somebody the opportunity to go through the BZA. Uh, to, uh, to obtain, uh, obtain that approval. And this is something that's come up, uh, it's come up recently on actually 248 Sanders Ferry. Everybody's kind of familiar with that property. So that's came, that's come up, uh, that we're working on some things right now where that previous use was a grandfathered use of the pizza place. So, you know, had a restaurant basically to serve an alcohol. That's one thing, but a brewery taproom is different. And, but there's no opportunity in Neighborhood Commercial, uh, to be able to, to do that. And so this is something, uh, you know, I can answer any questions about, but it's something that I just kind of put forward to the commission to see, you know, if it's something we want to move forward.
Real quick question. It, it has to be brewed on premises?
I believe that's correct, yes.
What if it's where it's a local brewery, it just doesn't happen to be on premises?
I think it has.
And that, that is something that's, that is more prevalent.
Yeah.
And where it's a local company, they did well at location A, but want to look at location B where it may not be brewed.
Ours, it has to be, it has to be manufactured on the premise.
Okay.
So it couldn't be like they manu, like, you know, some existing place where they manufacture it and then they got a second location. They couldn't, they couldn't do it there, not with our definition.
Then it becomes a bar.
Then it becomes a bar. And so, and it's sort of, you know, it's not a bar, but it's, it's a limited, it is limited alcohol sales, but it's just whatever they're manufacturing. It could be beer, wine, uh, you know, or liquor that's manufactured there on, actually physically on site. And there's a lot of these, these are, you know, these are pretty popular, uh, and, um, um, we are getting, we have been getting a lot of calls over the last couple of years, you know, about these things. And, you know, uh, this is just something that I'm looking at.
Does our definition of, of brewery taproom include the, the ability for the operator to offer growler fills? So you bring in, you, you purchase a growler of beer, of beer?
Yeah, if it's manufactured on the premise, yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm sure it would. I mean, there's a whole, which doesn't have anything to do with zoning, but there's a whole beer license and the beer board and, you know, there's, and the state has laws about different things. Yeah. So they have to meet all those, you know, those different requirements as well. Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Evans?
I, I guess I'm not quite understanding here. That particular location you talked about, Sanders Ferry Pizza that moved out had a, uh, a bar license and obviously that's not, uh, an approved use in Neighborhood Commercial, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. You can't have alcohol sales. And then I've got some other things looking at that particular issue. But on that particular site, we're working out, we got something from their attorney, uh, basically which, uh, probably is correct. Asserting their grandfathered status is still in effect. So basically if you had a use, uh, that was there, that was grandfathered. If no, no longer than 30 months go by, then you could still reestablish that use. It doesn't have to be that same business, just, just that non-conforming use. And so that's kind of the area where they're in. I think, I don't know, it was maybe a year or so ago that Sanders Ferry Pizza, uh, was operating at that facility. So, you know, they're probably within that, but we're working through that. But this, this whole thing of the beer, um, brewery taproom, that's, that's separate. From like a pizza place selling alcohol.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Okay. Okay, uh, number 11, um. Clarification for vacation rental. Yep, let me, let me hit what I had here on just a second. That's probably 12. Yes. So, so one of the, one of the things that we're, we're looking at on vacation, um, on vacation rental is, we're not radically changing anything, but, but already we, we have determined the city staff over the last year and looking at some of these issues. Is that our determination in Old Town Commercial and General Commercial where vacation rental is allowed? You're allowed one vacation rental per building. Okay. And, you know, part of that is if you have multiple vacation rentals in a building, quickly that becomes multifamily. Or it, it becomes a hotel motel. But it's, but the whole idea of vacation rental being 30 units or eight units all in one building, that's a hotel or that's multifamily. It's not vacation rental. So this is just some wording to clarify that. Uh, also additionally, uh, we've, we've got some language in here that, that clarifies that, that. Parking, wait a minute. That parking, like in our Old Town Commercial where you've got to have, you've got to have some kind of commercial stuff. And then you, on the second floor, you can have residential, you know, how we've got that. So one of our concerns had been, well, there was nothing clearly. That was like, what if somebody wanted to do public parking under there? Not parking for the residents, but public parking. So we're cleaning up some of that language to clarify what can go on that first, first floor. And then one of those things that we came up with too was that vacation rental should be, uh, we got to check this out, but should be limited to the second floor. Uh, of multi-story buildings. So that's, uh, that's one thing, so that it wasn't in the first floor of multi-story buildings. Yes, in Old Town Commercial and General Commercial. So those are, yeah, in those two, two, two places. Um, note three and four, we wrote it. Hold on just a second here. Da, da, da. Yeah, that's good. I think I covered that. Yeah. And one thing, uh, note number eight on number 12 right there. So note number eight, we had some things that limited the gross area of buildings in, I think Old Town Commercial, like offices and retail and stuff like that and, uh, and would limit that to 5,000 square foot. For the, for the use, it didn't make a whole lot of sense. So we reworded that and said for each tenant and increased that to 10,000 square foot. So it, but it's part of that whole Old Town thing that maybe doesn't really quite make sense on what some of those things are for. So we're just kind of clarified, uh, some of, some of those issues.
Commissioner Evans?
Two questions. One is you, you talked about having, uh, something commercial on the first floor. Is there anything pending on the old car wash over on, uh, Walton Ferry with that?
Yes.
That has anything to do with that?
It's, it's possible, possi, it's possible. Cause right now that's in, was it Old Town Commercial? Yeah, that's in Old Town Commercial. So you could have retail or offices on the bottom.
Well, I know there was a condition of sale there that had something to do with that kind of a.
It's po, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll ask that question later.
We have talked to folks about that. We've talked to several different folks about that, uh, and some things in that general area, but Old Town Commercial, there's, there are quite a few different things you could do. But it pushes all the residential to the second floor, which a lot of times makes it, makes it kind of tough to, to make it work.
Got sold and then was offered again. So I thought something may have fallen through there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Uh, number 13. There, there's some, there's some changes, okay? Uh, so here on, uh, number 13, then you can see this, yeah, the, it's up there, but this thing here. So you see all the little red that we did. So basically, you know, we're, some of this stuff did not make sense the way that it is. I mean, it had like, uh, in Old Town Residential, I mean, you had that a lot only had, a lot, not an individual lot in development, but a lot only had to be 20 foot wide. So you only had to have a 20 foot wide lot, which really didn't make, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever. So we parsed that out and changed that to where a multifamily in multifamily or Old Town Residential, it's got to be 70 foot wide. If you're going, if you're going to, uh, to do, um, multifamily developments. And then we gave some numbers on townhomes. It was just like, um, um, 20, it was 20 foot wide as well, which just didn't make a lot of sense. So we changed that to be where you had to have at least 60 foot if you're going to do it. So the smallest townhome is a duplex. So if you're going to do a townhome, the smallest one is a duplex, well, you need, you need at least 60 feet in order to meet all of our different requirements. So we basically said the, the minimum lot width of your development has to be 60 feet. And the individual lots within that development, those areas have to be 22 feet and that was 20 feet. And so basically that's going to make some of the townhomes, it's going to push those a little bit, a little bit larger, uh, within those, within those areas. Also, a very important number is down here on the bottom where it's minimum side yard that we're proposing to change the side yards from six to eight feet. We, we think the six feet is just problematic on some of the things that you're seeing that have been built on stadium, not the stadium townhomes, but the, but the individual homes. Uh, we, we feel like there needs to be a bigger, there's got to be a bigger, uh, bigger side yard. Also, one other change that we're proposing to make is here on the top, um, where we have OTR and it's got seven. And we redid this chart because it didn't have all these numbers up there again, but basically it was 15 units an acre. And so, you know, just what we talked about, about chival, uh, tonight, uh, that it was 15 units an acre. And so what we're proposing is that we change that from 15 units an acre to seven units an acre. That's, I mean, it's a big change. And it's a big change in the area, especially, you know, when you look at the area like chival that we were talking about tonight. 1970, that was multifamily, 17 units an acre, the whole, that whole area. Uh, 1985, it was still 17 units an acre multifamily. When they, actually when they did the Old Town redevelopment plan in 2006. And adopted the new zoning, it actually reduced it down to 15 foot, 15 units an acre. And so then this further reduces down there. I feel like, you know, we've got this underlying master plan for Old Town, you know? That's still in place that we have, we're setting all of the regulations on. I am comfortable from a staff standpoint. That reducing that down to seven doesn't get into taking and all of that, and it's still within the spirit of implementation for Old Town Residential of our Old Town Master Plan. Uh, you know, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Now you could still do 15 units an acre in Old Town Residential if you did plan development. But of course, if you did plan development, you're going to need at least three acres to even ask for a planned development. So, so as you can see, there's several changes that we're proposing that, you know, just like the people were discussing tonight, and I think a lot of you have shared, uh, you know, here over the last several, several meetings. The planning staff sees all these things that are happening with some of the, uh, more dense development within that area. And understandably, it is, it is furthering the plan for that area and it's, it's doing exactly what the plan and the regulations are intended for it to do, but I just don't think it's to the greater benefit of our community. I think a more smarter approach to, uh, more higher density development in areas that make more sense, that are really more mixed use and maybe we're turning over an existing use that we're not necessarily fond of. Versus just multifamily, just because it's zoned, we can do multifamily for multifamily sake. Uh, there needs to be a greater, greater impact, uh, when we have some of those more dense things. And then I'll just, I'll kind of land on this just real quick, is that our Westlake redevelopment plan, uh, we're, and it's going to be going public on this, on the framework draft of this. Uh, probably within the next 30 to 45 days. This is going to set up a future land use and redevelopment plan for this whole area. That then will lead to a rezoning of everything that would further the vision of whatever the plan is we're going to adopt. So, so some of the things like the folks were talking about tonight, gosh, why don't y'all do something? This is, you know, we're actually in that, we're well within the, in that process. And then hopefully by, hopefully by the end of next year, we'll actually be in a position where we'll have new zoning for that whole area. That furthers the plan we're going to hopefully adopt before the end of this year, the division for that whole area. And probably one of the things, and I've talked to several you about it, that whole chival area that we've talked about. That area, we're looking at more preservation of the single family homes and not, not looking at higher density. So. So a lot of the things that the folks were, were talking about today at the public hearing, um, uh, in support of some of these changes. Actually, it's, some of that stuff, they're right on, on, uh, on some of the changes we need to look at making. So I just wanted to kind of throw that, throw that in there.
Commissioner Peterson? Oh, sorry, we'll get to it.
Uh, I'm, it's 12 for me, but it's like number, number 13. Number 13, yeah. It's this, yeah. Yeah, 11 on yours, okay. Yeah.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yeah, I like, um, the idea of preserving some of our historic sections of town. That's i- ideal. And, um, I wonder if we can implement a three acre rule for any multifamily in Old Town. Is that something that we could do now?
I, I think it, I think it wouldn't be, um, it wouldn't be well supported by the plan that's in place. So we'd really be going, that would, that would really be working really against the actual, the actual plan that we've based the zoning on. But we're, we're close to having something that would, would, would completely allow us to do some, some really different things with that.
When will the, when will we be able to reduce the multi-units to seven?
Okay, so the timeline that we're looking, uh, I thought, I saw Mary Claire here earlier. So we're, what we're doing on this is we're doing a little bit different, uh, on our process. This is, this, this, if you approve it tonight, this is going to go to BOMA General Committee next week. It's going to go to full BOMA for a first reading next week. Two weeks after that, they're going to have the second reading and the, um, uh, uh, public hearing. And so possibly before the end of this month. the end of this month, everything that we're talking about right here could be in effect, full effect. That, yeah. And so, you know, part of that is, you know, I know we're, I know, I know we're going to make significant changes in a year or so, and some of these things will help do some of those things that you're talking about to kind of, to kind of calm that down a bit, but still stay in the spirit of the plan that we have now.
Thank you.
You're kind of, I'm going to jump in.
Sure.
You're kind of talking around what the question that I was going to ask earlier. Why do we have Old Town Commercial and Old Town Residential? Is there a brief explanation for that?
So back in 2005, and early 2005, and then it was all adopted in 2005, and the zoning was adopted early 2006. So from everything I can see, they created a whole committee, they did a real intense...
I remember when that happened.
Yeah.
But why do we still have it, I guess, is what I'm saying?
Why do we still have?
Yeah, our world is changing daily.
Yes, yes. Well, the thing about it is, is we're in that process of getting that yes.
That's what I mean. You're talking around what the question I was going to ask.
You're saying, why hasn't it been done already?
Yeah. Why do we, why do we have two sets of rules? Why do the rules apply differently for Old Town Commercial and Residential?
Because it was, yeah, because the city set it up that way. That's the way they adopted, they adopted that. And actually, when Old Town, when there was a change in the wording, just the name, they were looking, it looked like they were looking to go from 17 units to 12, but they went and did 15. So this has all been kind of looked at, and then this Old Town had been the vision that folks had. And the reason that now we're getting closer to doing that is because of the support of the aldermen that have funded the plan, you know, for this. So this just got funded, I think, two years ago. And so we are, you know, and so that's why we're getting that, because it's like a $95,000 plan.
It appears to me that that was done back in the time when folks mistakenly thought that the only way to revitalize that neighborhood was to make it attractive for investors to come and put larger and more and whatever. And that, if I'm correct on that, then obviously our whole scheme of things has changed with the...
I thought that too. I thought that too until I researched about, until me and the planning staff researched about chival. And that's not the case. The case for that area that you're talking about, the case is, it was already high-density, more, even more high-density residential development. And so actually, I thought, just like you were saying, you know, I guess that's what they want to do. Makes sense. I mean, if that's what you want to pour a lot of development into. But I don't, that wasn't the case. The case was, that was already zoned like that from 1970. And it probably, through that process, I don't, I wasn't here then, but through that process, was more about retaining the ability to do those kind of things, but maybe honing it in and some design guidelines and restrictions to maybe make it happen. I think the idea was, let's make this accelerate, and let's make it happen, but not just, let's take a place that only was zoned, single-family residential, quaint, single-family residential, and then let's make it explode with all this multifamily. It was already all, it was zoned that way since 1970. And so I kind of thought like you, but since we did that, then I think probably it was probably more, gosh, this is already multifamily, but let's kind of come up with a plan on a better way to do it, you know. And it might have been, and at the time, I guess, it would have been a pretty radical change to change it from, you know, high-density multifamily to just no multifamily at all, and just single-family. I mean, that could have, I just wasn't here at that time. So that kind of, so I think that's kind of what it is. But the important thing is, we are nearing, we are nearing the answer to that, which is the adoption of the Westlake Plan, which will then let us do that.
Complicate the staff's efforts when you have so many different columns and rules for different portions of town.
And this Old Town, the Old Town zoning, as you guys know and dealing with it, and we do from the staff standpoint, is so complicated. It's so complicated. There's so many nuances of, it's here, there, it's not, you know, it just doesn't, it's very, it's very difficult to administer. And that's one reason that not much has been done from the development side, is because it's been so complicated, not just for staff. That's complicated for the investor and the developer to even understand it. But it has gotten to a point now where we have folks really looking at it, and the market pressures are so high because of the values, they're figuring out, they're figuring out what to do with it. And as they're figuring out what, so basically, what happens on these things, just like chival. So what happens is, they come to us and say, hey, here's what we want to do. And then initially, we don't know, can you do that? Then we have to go back and look and see, yeah, you can do that, you know. And that's kind of how this has evolved. And a lot of this in Old Town, even though that's been on the books a long time, a lot of the problems with it have really only come about really, really here in the last two to three years. And, you know, we're seeing the fruit of it now, that people don't like what they're seeing, but that was approved, you know, just a couple of years ago. So we're seeing, we're seeing that. And then that, when those things got developed, then that was the urgency for BOMA to fund the money to do the plan to get this thing where we can, we can get it addressed.
There is some urgency. There are investors and real estate people and developers who are buying parcels of property, one house at a time, trying to amass enough room to do yet another high-density unit. So we need to move posthaste on this.
Yes, we totally agree. Totally agree. Totally agree. On 14 there, that's about the averaging. I'll use chival again because everybody's kind of familiar with it. So on chival, the properties on either side, one is within 100-foot, and the other is a little bit more than 100-foot. If both properties were within 100-foot, you'd have to do averaging. But it's all wacky because it's a 15 to 35-foot minimum required setback. You could go 15, or you could go up to 35-foot. But if you have something on either side, which chival didn't, but if it did, the weird thing is, the furthest back it could be would be 30-foot, which is twice the minimum. So I'm looking at getting rid of this averaging thing, just because it's, it doesn't, it doesn't really make, make a lot of sense. Let's see. I've already talked about, yeah, I've talked about getting rid of averaging. Okay. This is going to be number 17. If you can say what page that is when I start that, that'd be awesome for yours. So page 13. So it's number 17. That's just a minor technical change. Number 18, this is worth mentioning. We need more opportunities for childcare, especially affordable childcare. So one of the things that we're doing is looking to allow as a conditional use daycare centers in industrial and heavy commercial. And then also to allow, and we talked about this at the work session, allow office as a permitted use in industrial and heavy commercial. We'd like to see more office. You know, more childcare opportunities are going to, are important to our workforce. So that's what, that's what that is. Number 19 there, we added this scrap operations. We just called this out separately. It's going to, you've got to get a conditional use and everything to do it in industrial. But right now, I think somebody could maybe have a scrapyard as a part of something, and it'd be really difficult for us to call it out because we don't have a specific guidelines. Nobody's, we don't, nobody's doing this, but it's just something we ran across. They were kind of concerned. If somebody started doing this, that could be a problem. Item number 20, I've got several things here. Let's see, change to, we talked about that, about the 5,000. This is on neighborhood commercial, changing note number 13 on the times that you can be open in neighborhood commercial, and just increasing that by one hour. And then also allowing restaurants to serve alcohol. So right now, in neighborhood commercial, it's got it where you actually can have a restaurant, but you can't serve alcohol. It seemed like, I mean, we're not promoting alcohol. It's just, it seemed odd to limit it, you know. In all other commercial areas, you could have a restaurant and have alcohol sales associated with it, but you couldn't in neighborhood commercial, which is actually where you might have a restaurant, you might want a restaurant in neighborhood commercial. So that's what that is. And then vacation rental, limited to upper floors. We talked about that on multi-story buildings. Brewery taproom, we've already talked about that. It's the same thing as that. It's got a lot of pages here. I'm on 21, page 18. I'm on item number 21. That was just some conflicts. 22, just some other conflicts, not a big, not a big deal. Okay, number 23, this is where I'm looking to allow industrial zone properties to maximize the use of their property by increasing, you know, when you do an addition or something, you know, how much of your land you can use. Most of our industrial property is already developed. We have buildings on it, but a lot of times they want to expand. But then they run into having to get a variance in order to do that, and sometimes they don't do it. This would maybe encourage it. And then also, it will allow the maximum use of our industrial property. Doesn't change anything with uses, just lets you do more with buildings on the properties. And then 24, that's the same thing about industrial, just increasing the lot coverage from 50% to 70%. Just lets you put more buildings on there. But I think this will be very helpful as we get to a point where more industrial buildings want to, you know, add a little 5,000 square foot here or there or something. I think that's going to be good from an economic development standpoint. Number 25 is on page 20. What is that? Adjusted minimum lot area for widths. Okay, you know, when we, this is for plan development, that chart we looked at earlier about the widths and all of that stuff, this kind of does the same thing. I would note, if you can see RR and ER over there on minimum lot area, I'm proposing changing RR in for plan development from 12,500 square foot to 15,000. That 12,500 just seemed a little low for RR. And then in ER, changing that from 10,000 to 12,500. Again, that's just for plan developments. Okay. Number 26 on page 22. This was just something that fixed confusing language. It was just an error that was in there. Number 27 on page 23, nothing new in there. It's just noting, noting the requirements about Historic Zoning Commission. And we had some folks speak tonight about Historic Zoning Commission. We actually have a Historic Zoning Commission already. And page, I mean, number 28. Yep, yep. Commissioner, Commissioner Longmire is on there. Number 28 on page 24. Okay, this is something, we have folks that want to, so basically, most of these are on the lake. Somebody has a nice house on the lake. They want to tear it down and build a new house, but they want to live in the existing house while they build the new one, which we think is fraught with all kinds of pitfalls. Because what we don't want is to be faced with, you know, somebody, they build the new house, and then they don't want to get rid of the old house. And then it puts us in a situation where we have to kick somebody out of one of the houses, and, you know, we got to demolish it, and, you know, it puts us in a bad situation. So what I'm putting on here is, is just a note that you can't, you clearly can't do that. But I see this being more of an issue. And my concern was, you know, it's mostly homeowners that want to do it now, but I could see somebody with rental property on a lake that might want to do the same thing. But then they might not want to tear down the other one. Yeah, we wouldn't issue a perm, well, we wouldn't issue a permit until you...
I know what this is saying, but I'm saying, couldn't you accomplish the same thing? I was saying that you couldn't get the UNO on the new bale, didn't it?
Yeah, really, you know, what would happen is, people would be living in there, you'd say, we're not going to give you a UNO, and they would stay in there for a couple of years, and, you know, it could drag out into court, and then eventually force the city to have to tear one of them down, which is probably going to have to evict somebody. And then the city's going to have to go on private property to tear down a perfectly good house. And that's, you know, I think that would be a real tough thing. And it's something, you know, if you, if you want to build another house on your lot, just tear, you know, tear the one down before you get started on the, on the other one. And then, you know, and you know what happened is, if you keep it, yeah, you might move out of it, but then you're going to be like, oh, well, I'm actually going to keep it as an accessory structure, and we're going to convert it to a garage, or a guest house, or an accessory dwelling. And that, you know, that's kind of what you can, what you can get into on that, so. Number 29 on page 25. This is something, we've had somebody that wants to do a home for aged, and they had an issue with the number of acres. We required three acres. And so we're suggesting to bring that down to one acres. This is just where some folks live in a house, but we don't think it should be less than one acre. I think the folks that wanted us to do this wanted it less than, and it's still limited to five units an acre. So I think this is a reasonable change to go from three acres to one acre. And we did this, when we made this change a couple of years ago, we just put that in there, and we used what we were using for independent living and assisted living. We used that same acreage. So, but we didn't have a definition of home for the aged. So this just kind of cleans that up. I think it's fair, it's a fair change. I don't foresee it being a big, a big issue. Number 30 on page 26. This is just that scrap operations stuff. Number 31 on page 27. Oh, okay. Yeah, this is something we already do. This is just, this is just defining, if there's an accessory use, an allowable accessory use, it's defining how many square feet, you know, 33.33% of the square foot, you can't have more than that of the accessory use. Because sometimes we'll get folks that want to do an accessory use, and they get into 50%. And that's really, that's not really set up, you know, to do that. So that kind of does that. But we're already doing this. This just kind of is how we're, how we're doing it as a staff. Number 32 on page 28. These are just images. If you turn to the next page, just a pergola is just something visually. So when we're talking to people about what pergolas, gazebos, and trellises are, it's pretty clear, you know, what that is. People get real confused on that. This next one, number 33 on page 30, this is a pretty big change. So what I'm suggesting is, on accessory dwellings, and you got to go to the BZA to get this approved, but I'm saying cap it at 1,200 square feet and with no appeal. So you can't make it any bigger. But we're seeing very large accessory dwellings going to the BZA. They've turned down the last couple that actually been submitted. But, you know, so now we've got people, before it was like, ah, this is for Aunt Sue, or it's for my mom or dad or something, or my cousin. And now we've got people just applying, just saying it's a guest house, you know. And so, and very large, very large. But see, they're doing this on houses that are like 5,000 square feet. So they could do up to like, I think, 2,500, maybe 2,500 square foot, maybe, or something. So, or maybe it's 1,800. So I think this is something that needs to be, needs to be done. Number... No, this is everything. Yeah. So everything we're talking about, this isn't Old Town. This is, this is everything, other than those...
To do a detached garage, it can be no bigger than 1,200 square feet.
No. No, you'll have some other things in there. It could maybe be bigger depending on your lot size, and then how big your house is. But that's just for an accessory dwelling.
So a garage would not be an accessory dwelling?
That'd just be accessory structure.
Even if I wanted to put a bathroom in there?
Yes. Yes, it would be. Yeah. Yeah. Even if you have a bathroom in there. And so we have some people really pushing that, you know? Getting stuff in a garage that's getting close, uh, getting close to it. So we deal, we deal with that all the, all the time. You get a car condo.
Car condo, there we go.
Uh, number thirty-four. Yeah, yes. Yeah, and we're gonna, I'll just go ahead and cover that. Uh, we'll, we'll talk about it a little bit, but I can go ahead and cover it now. So basically we had a, we had a bunch of things come up where, oh, well, this is really attached. Well, it's not. It's, it's like a three-foot hallway going twenty-foot and it's like, that's not attached. And so we've got some language in here is what we have come up with over the last couple of years, how we're, how I've just kind of interpreted it. And so basically what I've come up with is that, uh, if it's a seven foot by ten foot at least, heated area that's attached to the house and then that a structure is attached to that, that's all considered an addition. But if it, if it's not, if it's not that big, then it's, which basically seven by ten is an actual room by code in the building code. So if you're doing smaller than that, that's, that's not, you're not an addition to the house. If you're adding on to something smaller, it's just a, you know, little connection or something that you're doing. And so we, we do some things later in here visually and explain that, uh, so we have clarity. That's going to be very helpful. We deal with this all of the time. Cause people, you know, and really what we want people to do is if you're going to do, want to do an accessory dwelling, don't do an accessory dwelling, just do an addition and do an accessory apartment as a part, make the accessory apartment a part of the addition. Cause we'd rather see people add on to their houses than build a whole nother structure. Cause you know where it's, I mean, we're getting all kinds of recorded instruments to protect ourselves. You know what's going to happen eight or 10 years from now when Aunt Sally is not here anymore. Somebody's going to end up buying it and then they're going to rent it. You know, they're going to rent, rent that extra house. I mean, why wouldn't you? I mean, I don't even, you know, it'd seem criminal not to, uh, even though there's restrictions. Uh, but it'll all, you know, eight or 10 years from now, that'll be something, how are you going to keep up with that? I mean, it would be huge enforcement issue. So we gotta, we gotta really look at these things. But number thirty-four on page thirty-two. Wanted to make it clear, it's not clear right now. I want to make it clear, you can't have an accessory apartment in your house and have an accessory dwelling. So really right now, possibly you could have your house, inside your house, you could have an accessory apartment, which would be fine. And you could go through the process of getting an accessory dwelling in your backyard. So this kind of tidies that up where you can have one or the other, but you can't have, you can't have both. Uh, number thirty-five. I think this is that image. Yeah, this is that image ten. If you go back like two more pages, you'll see an image that kind of explains what I was talking about. And then thirty-six, that's that whole seven by ten thing that I just explained. Thirty-seven, this is all about hallways and all that kind of mirror the language. Uh, that, oh, this is, this is something worth noting. Number thirty-eight. So basically what I'm saying here is if you, if you get an accessory dwelling approved by the BZA, it has to be at least twenty foot off of the side yard and twenty foot off of the rear yard. And there is no opportunity for variance of that. That's a hard, that's a hard number. You can't go any closer, closer to that. Now what that will do is if you want, if you want and can get approved to put an accessory dwelling in your back, in your, in your backyard, it will be in your backyard. It won't be five or eight foot from your neighbor and their patio. It's, you know, so if it, if it's really a need that someone has, they needed to make the decision of, gosh, am I going to use the sweetest part of my backyard to put this accessory dwelling? And in doing that, it kind of pushes it way behind the house as well. So, I don't, and I'm, I'm open to any comments on this. I just think this is very reasonable and everything, a lot of these things that we're looking at, we're thinking about the neighboring property. And it's like, what are we, what are we allowing that is, is infringing really potentially on the neighboring property? Uh, while still want to give people flexibility for opportunities to do stuff to their property, but not where it's causing a problem for their neighbor. So. Go through a lot of pages. Number thirty-nine on page. On page thirty-seven. Okay, this is just saying, uh, uh, is that about fences? Wait a minute. Yeah, this has, this has to do with fences. Right now you could be ten foot off the edge of pavement and we're changing that to twelve foot. Twelve foot's what we use about our sign enforcement and twelve foot seems very reasonable. Ten foot's a little, a little close to the edge of, edge of pavement. Uh, number forty. Uh, just some, just a figure to demonstrate about fence location. Number forty-one, we give some dimensions about picket fences. We've had a lot of issues about picket fences. And so we've kind of come up with a definition in-house that we use and then we want to kind of codify that. Uh, so that as we're talking to people in the future about what a picket fence is that's in your front yard. Cause some things are not picket fences. Uh, so, uh, that some people want to say that they are. Number, yeah. Uh, yeah, you can, you can, you can go out, but it's double the setback, I think, with like your rear yard fence at your, at your height. But yeah, there is some consideration, you know, for that. Uh, forty-two, that's the same as I said before. Forty-three, this is several things that I want to make sure that everybody understands is fences, one acre and seven feet in privacy fence. Okay. Allow, okay. So right now we allow ranch or horse style fences on two acre lots. And we got to talking about that and it really, a one acre lot is a pretty big lot. If you want to do, you know, kind of a, a horse fence, you know, uh, more of a ranch kind of style fence, that would seem reasonable to do. So we're suggesting to, uh, to change that. Then also. Also in the rear yard, we're looking to, right now, it's if you had a fence, you know, just like a wood privacy fence, it can be seven foot high. But we're suggesting is let's just make that eight foot high. Uh, we run into a lot of folks that really want it eight. Some of them end up going to BZA, but most of them just kind of changed and like, well, you know, I'll, I guess I'll do seven. I think maybe we've even had some do it and then come back and, and some, you know, we kind of, a neighbor turns them in or something and they actually have to cut off part of the top and I don't know. It just doesn't make a lot of sense because a fence and especially, we've got more people, I think since COVID that are utilizing their backyards. And if you want to do a fence and a lot of people, they may have pool deck or a deck or elevation, you know, elevation issues, that one foot difference can make a big difference on your privacy. Uh, I don't think it makes that big a difference visually if we're just talking about one foot. Uh, so that was, and plus when you're getting seven foot, then that's kind of the, you know, that's typically the cheaper lows is seven, seven foot fencing. I mean, you know, typically. And eight foot, a lot of times, sometimes it's more a custom, custom type of fencing. So. Uh, and then, uh, this is something too, is looking at increasing the height of front yard decorative fences from forty-two, forty-two to forty-eight. So right now you can have a decorative fence in the front yard, but it's forty-two inches. And we're looking to increase that by six inches to, to forty-eight. Really, I mean, we've really held firm. Well, it's got to be forty-two inches and, but we've really had over the last, last year and a half, maybe. We've had a lot of folks that just really were like, they really wanted to do a four foot fence. It was a nice fence. And we're like, no, you can't, you can't do that. And, um, and then there's some, there's some folks that I think like with dogs, that a, that that six inch difference, if you can do a decorative four foot, I guess it, you know, their dogs stay in better on some, some types of dogs, uh, if it's just a little bit higher. So, so, you know, I wanted to float that out there and, you know, and see if there was, see what, see what you all thought about some of these fence changes, you know, and kind of looking at this as well as looking at neighbors and how you're impacting neighbors and all that stuff, uh, is also looking at what, what feels reasonable. You know what I mean? We've got a lot of regulations, but then looking at this, we're trying to look and see what's a reasonable regulations when it comes to, it comes to fencing. So. Go to the next. A lot of stuff about fences here. Uh, number forty-four on page, on forty-four. So page forty-four, forty-four. Uh, this is no big deal. This is just adding, making clarification that we're talking about semi-tractor trucks. Cause it's, was a little confusing because tractor trucks wasn't in there and it kind of looked like maybe it's trailers. So we've, we've made it where it's trucks. We've been enforcing it that way, but this kind of clarifies that. The next page, number forty-five. Correct retaining walls. So we have folks that want to do retaining walls around the edge of the property. Well, if you do a retaining wall on the edge of the property, I mean, you're going to have a foundation that's going to go under the property line. And so you're going to be encroaching on your neighbor. And so what this does is, um, make sure that no footings are extending past there unless you've got proper easement or something, uh, to do that. This has actually become a real, a real, a real issue on several different cases. Next page forty-six. Uh, this is something that right now, you could take your pool deck, your concrete thing or your pool deck, and you could go all the way to the property line. Your pool can't go all the way to property line, but your pool deck can. And we're having more and we're having a crazy number of pools being installed and people are really, they're utilizing their whole backyard and it's putting pool decks right up against your property line. And so what we're looking here is let's keep the pool deck off at least five foot off of a property line. And I think that will make a big, the big difference. Cause otherwise if this is the property line right here between me and Vanessa, then I can pull, pour my concrete all the way up to the property line in a lot of cases. And her, her deck or her outside patio may be, you know, right, you know, right there. So that's a, that's a little, little problematic. So I think this will, this will be a good, a good change. Next page forty-seven. Uh, we already have, uh, HOAs that weekly have, maybe have a different food trucks come. This is just so we get that cleared up that, that's okay. It's okay if HOAs have a food truck, special event every once in a while, that, that's not a, that's not a problem. And then also we want, we're, we're clarifying and making sure it, we already doing it this way. But in commercial areas, you can't just put a food truck on a vacant lot. I mean, you gotta do it in a parking lot. Uh, we've had people that want to do food trucks up on grassy vacant lots in commercial areas. And so we're making sure, you know, that's, that's not allowed. Okay, couple more pages. Number forty-eight. Is that forty-eight? What is that? Forty, forty-nine, page forty-nine. Number forty-eight. Okay, you know, like on, um, villas, uh, really it's duplexes. So we call them villas, but, uh, so you know that area, the little grassy area between the concrete driveways? Where they're so close, you open your door, you'll hit the other car and all of that. And there's no room in there to actually get any grass or anything of interest. What we're saying here is if you're doing a townhome, um, then that area has to be three foot. Cause right now it's like one, one and a half, two foot. And then that way, and that's going to impact the townhome, uh, layout of the garage and probably make the garage a little bit bigger. Because right now you're doing a, you're doing a villa, a townhome and, and that grassy area is just like this wide. And then that'll extend it to about like this. So it's a little change, but I think that actually will make a, make a big difference. Okay. Number forty-nine. On page fifty-one. Uh, this is a little different. Um, and this is really maybe geared more toward our parks. It's allowing, the city has to meet all the requirements everybody else does, except for signs. But, uh, but everything else, we have to meet everything else. But what I'm doing here is I'm giving an exception for if the city has parking lots, probably in a park, that they want to do a gravel parking lot, that they can do it. You know, and we're not just not going by the ordinance, we're changing the ordinance, uh, to allow that. And I think this is something, uh, that would be appropriate to do. And it can, and it can only be done with the approval of the city engineer as well. So it involves them. Next page, uh, fifty. Uh, this is, this is a little bit of a change. So what we're doing is, is on multifamily, you know, when we have a one bedroom or efficiency, it's like one and a half times that number and that's how we're getting the parking requirement. What we're saying is, uh, let's go up to one point seven five. And it does add, it does add, like if you had twenty-five units, that would change it from thirty-eight spaces required to forty-four. So you get six more spaces. So, and some of the things that have come before us, especially the shivvle with the one bedroom, we had a lot of discussion about that. And the planning department looked at that and we were like, yeah, that's, you know, that, I think we need to, I think we need to up that. Uh, so I think just doing it to one point seven five, it could go to two, but probably two might be too much. But one point seven five seems, you know, seems reasonable. Uh, and then we, we came up, we didn't have a, uh, we have brewery and taproom already, already as a use on fifty-one there, uh, but we didn't have specific parking calculations. So we, we added that. Going to the next thing. Number fifty-two on page fifty-six. Uh, this is just, um, we had slides, side slopes, shall be steeper. It really was supposed to be not steeper. So we just needed to correct that on the berm thing. So the next page, uh, the item number fifty-three. Uh, this section is more appropriate. Yeah, this is just moving this to the planned development section. No change. The next page fifty-four, no, item number fifty-four. These are just these two images to show what a sixty degree sign is. So we were having difficulty explaining what a sixty degree sign is. So we needed to put that in there. Next page, uh, number fifty-five. Okay, this is something, um, so what this is, is this is really targeted mostly at the streets of Indian Lake, is to allow them a pathway to come, to come back to the planning commission in Boma to get a artistic signature sign for their retail development. And so I have different requirements that really, this can only happen with a big development that's facing three eighty-six. So it would be a way that they could do it. It doesn't mean you have to, would have to approve it. It just gives them a pathway to do that within our sign ordinance. So, and definitely the streets, you know, the health of the streets of Indian Lake on our commercial sector. You know, it's really, there's, it doesn't have a ton of visibility. The only sign they really have is right there at Indian Lake, which is, isn't, that sign isn't much bigger than, um, Volunteer Village. It's about, it's about, about the same size. And, uh, so I think that would be a reasonable thing to do. Next page, fifty, item number fifty-six. That's just fixing a table on the air, an air on the table. Next page fifty-seven. Uh, that's just noting what a grandfathered digital sign is, like the Huckabee sign. Just so we kind of note that that's a grandfathered sign. Okay, next page, item number fifty-eight. Not a big deal. This is just lining it up with how we have commercial. This really affects schools and churches in residential areas. Lets them have more changeable copy, uh, signage on that. Next page, this is associated with that, uh, regional retail signature sign that I talked about. Now, and we didn't give specific like height limits and it had to be of a certain material. We're just giving these images on these next two pages is, and then some guidance, uh, so that at least we're saying it's not just a typical sign. It's got to be something that has some interest to it. I'm seeing it more as an artistic, you know, artistic type of sign. You could see those images, uh, item number sixty. Clarification into pre-signs. Okay, that sixty and sixty-one, that's just cleaning up some things about residential signs to line up with commercial. There's really no big, no big changes there. And we put a little chart at the bottom. Next page, number, item number sixty-two. This is just, uh, the state, uh, changing things about when you can advertise, when you can put signs out for elections. It was the, the timeframe had to start sixty days before the election. Now it's sixty days before early voting, which really pushes it further. So you're going to get to enjoy more signs out there for a longer period of time. Now, and I might just mention this, it's interesting because the state law is in total conflict with the Supreme Court case law about signs. So we're, we're, we're against. So we're, we're, we're against, we're not lining up with the Supreme Court case law, but we really don't have much choice, cause this is a specific state law. So it's really a conflict. Yeah, Grant?
And the states changed it twice.
Yeah, yes. I don't think they care about that one. So, that's fine. Item number sixty-three. Um, you can see the picture of the barber pole at the bottom. We've had some barbers, like real barbers, uh, uh, in town, and the pole is like super significant. And, you know, of course, we don't allow flashing signs and stuff in your windows and things. What this would allow, it would allow barber poles that would have, be lit and spin, and they could be inside of a, of a window. So you could still have a barber pole outside, it just couldn't be spinning and, and flashing or anything. Now, you know, with this, this is really geared toward barber shops, but it's not limited. I mean, anybody could actually do it once we have it in there, but, so we thought this was, was reasonable, you know, to do this. Uh. Keep going. Item number sixty-four, we're almost there. This is just adding a date, no big deal. Number sixty-five. What this is, is, you know, we've talked about this a couple of times where a, a developer has met the height limit, and they're like, oh, they're at thirty-five foot. And then we're like, well, hey, you, you got HVAC system on the roof. You're gonna have to hide that with a parapet wall. Your parapet wall is gonna have to be twice as high as it is now or do something. And then it's like, so what happens is, they've got this building that maybe looks good, and then they have to lower the elevation of the building so that they, the parapet walls are hiding everything, which really isn't good from a design standpoint. So what we're saying is, when we run into that situations, when staff is saying, oh, you gotta have a parapet wall to, you know, to cover that, we won't count that part of the parapet wall that's covering that, uh, you know, but we'll just determine that as we look at those things. But I think this is, this is needed. Timothy, we've run into that quite a bit, haven't we? This is, this is a regular issue that we deal with. And it alters the design of the building, so then by the time it gets to you all, sometimes something might be a little squattier. And we had a better version of it before it got to you, but they had to meet our staff comments and then hide that, and they had to shrink the building down a little to do it. Uh, this is one, number sixty-six. Uh, we didn't have a definition for what a, uh, desk reception, a front desk reception. So remember, we talked about vacation rental, and then that can be turned into hotel motel. Well, a hotel motel has to have twenty-four hour, uh, desk service. But we didn't have a definition of what that desk, desk service was, and then now we have that. So, that's good. Next page, sixty-seven. Accessory dwelling. Uh, just a definition, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, those are just definitions for accessory apartments and, and detached accessory dwellings. Nothing, it's new wording, but it's just to provide clarification. Uh, sixty-nine. What this, this was, this is weird, is that what we found is, and what this corrects, we found that multifamily meant three or more units. Yeah, three more to two or more, yeah. Yeah, from, yeah, meant th- three units. So what happened is, villas and, villas and townhomes is clear, cause a townhome separated, you got a unit, and you got another unit. But what this hole would do is, you could almost have a unit with a unit above it. And it actually wouldn't be multifamily. It was, it was just a little, it's a little hole in there, and this, this, this closes that, closes that hole with this definition. Uh, number seventy. That's not, that's just for that home for the aged language we talked about. Number seventy-one, this is a definition for a kitchen facility. We use this on, you know, you're talking about the bathroom and a garage. We use this to determine, is it really, is it really a dwelling? And so, uh, does it have a kitchen facility? And so we, we created that definition. Number seventy-two, that's just an image about a curved, curved lot, no, no real big thing there. Number seventy-three. Okay, this is, this is important. So we have a lot of properties with swimming pools that are renting their swimming pools. We consider that a commercial activity, we're treating it as that now, and then this just further clarifies it, that if you're renting your pool out on these pool rentals, um. Yeah, on Swimly, uh, that is a, we're considering that a commercial recreational use. And that is not appropriate in a residential, a residentially zoned area. So, and we're, we've dealt with several that have done that, and, um, so we're actively looking for those to enforce. This will be, this will be more, potentially more impactful than vacation rental. And it's taking off like big. Oh, yeah. And it's a problem. It's a real. Yeah, yeah. It almost got where they got a free ride from the legislator to where we couldn't touch it. Uh, so. Vacation rental.
Ordinance before they put in their blanket law.
That's correct.
Same thing needs to happen here, and I think it is. If we put in our ordinance, then we can try to get an exemption if Swimly passes next time.
That's right. That would, yeah, so we'll have it, we'll have it in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, this is a prob, this is a problem. And then, like I said, we've got a whole bunch of pools that have come in the last couple of years, and so we have a huge inventory of people that have never had pools before. And then now you have Swimly and things like that, that are really giving you an opportunity to financially, you know, recoup, you know, quite a bit of money. Uh, but what happens is, they'll rent it, and they rent it out to really big parties. And sometimes it's probably, but it's still, it's a lot of, it's a lot of people. I mean, it's one thing if you're just having a party yourself, but when you're renting it out, that's a commercial. Yeah, to, really, uh. Yeah, and it's hard to, it's, it is hard to enforce. The last page, item number seventy-four, that's just that scrap operations definition that we talked about earlier. And then that is everything. So that is all those items. I think at this point, the only thing that we came up with is to provide, to add more notification by postal, maybe posting something, uh, on a, uh, uh, adding a use on a final development plan.
FDP.
FDP, yeah. Okay, does that sound? I know that was a whole lot, and, uh, but thank goodness, we already had that work session. They covered the majority of all this, but that's everything that I have on, on that. And if we, if, if we want to entertain a motion.
Everybody's on Facebook. Like when you're posting notices?
Oh, um. I think we have it on some of the, this, it's all on all the cities stuff, I mean, for some of the different things, but it's the state, it's the state requirements for posting, you know, for all the zoning stuff. And I don't think Facebook, you know, it'd be great, you know, cause really, it's a, all the posting and the notice and all that, it's very, it's very time consuming, uh, to do, especially posting signs are, it's, it's, it, it, and then, you know, you gotta keep track of it, cause it's gotta be out by a certain day. I mean, so there's a lot involved.
I'm not saying it's the only place, but.
Yeah, I think, Lauren, don't we, it is on the city, it's on the city's website. I don't know, do they transfer that over the, the city? We don't have a Facebook page, but the city does. I don't know if that's on there. We'll look at that, yeah.
I mean, I'm just saying, if you're trying to notify people of things that are happening, that, it just seems to me like that's all I hear. I don't really do that. I don't read Facebook.
Right, right.
Where, where you learn that, on, on Facebook?
Yes. We can look at that and see, I don't think we want to codify it in the, in the zoning ordinance.
No.
But we can certainly, uh, the planning staff can look at how we can maybe have that transfer over when we do it on the city, the city webpage. I think we, I think we could do that. Yeah. Okay, good idea.
Mr. Hasty?
What do you need from us? Uh, do we need to make a recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman? That these adjustments be made to the zoning ordinance, since it's technically their ordinance?
Yes. It's a rec, it's a recommendation to BOMA to, uh, recommend approval of all the changes that we, that we went over with the addition of looking to expand.
Take care of the notifications.
Ex, expand notice on, uh, final development plans, add use. Yeah.
I will so move, just to clean it up, clarify, planning experience and.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Recommend that Alderman approve.
Can we get a second on that, please? A second from Commissioner Peterson. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood? Slattery?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Any final comments from the planning director?
I'll do, and, and I know it's late, I'll just do just a few, a few quick ones. Uh, the use in occupancies, you know, we've talked about those before, cause it's a good indicator of what's going on. Looking at this, this point in time with use in occupancies in twenty, in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty, we had seventy-seven and seventy-six, uh, use in occupancy so far in those years. So far, I believe this year, we're at a hundred and thirty-eight. So there is a lot going on, a lot of that's businesses and, and things like that, so there's a lot going on. Uh, the next steps on the zoning ordinance changes, I already covered that on how that process is gonna go forward. We're meeting with our, uh, Westlake redevelopment, future land use plant redevelopment plan consultants. We're meeting with those, them Thursday, and we will set out the timeline over the next, for the next three months on the public involvement and what that process is gonna look like, uh, you know, uh, over the next couple of months. Uh, and then also, we've, uh, we've, uh, we've secured the, uh, consultant to do the Stop Thirty Road Future Land Use Plan. So we've engaged with them, and we will get started with that in the next, next couple of months. Uh, also, we're doing interviews tomorrow for our new economic development community planner position. And those are just the things that I wanted to just briefly mention. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you, staff. Thank you for everybody, for, obviously, a long meeting tonight. Um, but I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
There was way too much of a pause before that. I'm gonna second that and, oh, in favor, please signify by saying, ah.